Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the May 15, 2024, our regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning with praise and thanksgiving. We thank you for who you are. We thank you for your great love and your mercy. You look from heaven and behold, all the sons of men. You look upon all the inhabitants of the earth. We pray this morning for peace in Israel, peace in the Middle East. We pray for protection for all the innocent people that have been affected by war. We pray for protection over all of our men and women serving in our military. We pray for protection over all of our law enforcement, firefighters, and first responders. And we pray for a special blessing over Hillsborough County, the state of Florida, and our great nation. We thank you for peace throughout our land. And we ask you for a special blessing on this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. This morning, we have two very special proclamations, and Commissioner Cohen will present the first one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask the following individuals to please join me here at the podium. William Thomas, the Community Action Board Chair. Raymond Wong, the Community Action Board Vice Chair. Dr. Miyaza Morrison with the Education Institute of Tampa Family. Brianna Reynolds. And Sharon Gordon, the Social Services Manager for Hillsborough County. Good morning. Good morning. Come on up. Good morning. Good morning to all of you and welcome. Community action agencies do amazing work to support Hillsborough County's most vulnerable individuals and families. Community Action Month recognizes these agencies, most notably the Hillsborough County Community Action Board, which is also known as CAB. The CAB's commitment to helping communities grow, thrive, and improve overall quality of life is an inspiration to us all, and it is my pleasure to present this proclamation declaring May 2024 as Community Action Month. And I'm just going to read the proclamation before I hand it over, and we have a few remarks from our guests. Whereas community action agencies have been fighting poverty since 1964, when they were created as part of the United States Economic Opportunity Act, and whereas the agencies put a human face on poverty, help residents with lower incomes become self-sufficient, uplift neighborhoods, and ensure all people are able to live with dignity; and whereas community action agencies work with the state of Florida to help guide reform of the welfare system, a partnership that enhances both entities and benefits Hillsborough County residents; and whereas community action agencies contribute to Hillsborough County's most vulnerable individuals and families by providing cost-effective programs that have profound impact on people's lives; whereas the Hillsborough County Community Action Board guides the development, implementation, and evaluation of community service block grant funds and programs that serve residents and communities in need. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 2024 as Community Action Month in Hillsborough County. I'd like to congratulate you all, and I'd like to ask Mr. Thomas if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
Where's?
Oh, here we go. Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This is our Community Action Month proclamation, and we're going to hear from you first.
Well, thank you and welcome, everyone. I'm always in gratitude of the plant city traffic that comes over this way. But again, just a brief moment, I want to thank the Commissioners and the county and our citizens as well. The Community Action Board, we're just proud to go on the trail of just self-sufficiency, make sure our residents have an opportunity to live, work, and play in Hillsborough County. We love what we do. We're passionate about what we do. We appreciate all the support that we get from our county representatives. And at this point in time, I'd like to end of that note and pass it on to my vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ray Wong, representing Commissioner Cohen on the CAB, I just have a brief statement. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the Board of Commissioners for your unwavering support of the Community Action Board and our mission to uplift most vulnerable members of our community. Together, we can continue to make a difference and build a brighter future for all residents of Hillsborough County. Thank you for recognizing the importance of community action and for your ongoing commitment to creating a better tomorrow for everyone. With us today is Dr. Miyaza Morrison. I'd like her to come up and speak briefly.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, the Community Action Board, and the Hillsborough County Social Services Office for having us here today. We truly appreciate your continued partnership, which allows us to assist our students with becoming self-sufficient and advancing their career. The Education Institute of Tampa Family was started by Tampa Family Health Centers as an affordable solution to the workforce needs in the areas of medical assisting, pharmacy technician, and medical coding and billing. These students receive hands-on learning in our newly-built facility in 33612. We also place our students in externships to receive real-time experience in the clinics. As we gear up for our first graduation, we have already identified job placements and currently have a retention rate of over 90%. This partnership with Hillsborough County has allowed students the opportunity to work towards a career in each of these programs. The recipients have access to a caseworker and wraparound services, allowing them the opportunity to focus on learning and reaching the next level in their career. We have seen recipients truly blossom by obtaining employment, finding permanent residence for their families, and being more confident in their abilities to learn and succeed. The main gift I believe most of our students receive is hope. Thank you for allowing us to provide hope to individuals who do not often feel seen, heard, or valued. You have allowed us the opportunity to see these recipients grow, and we are so proud of each of them. I would now like to invite one of our students, Ms. Victoria Glover, to speak. Thank you for being here, and we're proud of you, Victoria.
I would like to first say thank you to the Hillsborough County Board of Commission, the Hillsborough County Community Action Board, and the Hillsborough County Social Service Office. Without your compliments to uplift those in need, I would not be able to be here today. And I'm a proud medical assistant at the Education Institute of Tampa Family. I would like to thank the Education Institute of Tampa Family and the Tampa Family Center for not only starting this institute, but also taking the extra steps to partnership so that who may not have the opportunity to advance their career get a chance. For as long as I can remember, I had wanted to help others. What you have given to me by full scholarships to advance my education will allow me to do just that, be a medical assistant. Also, with the support of my caseworker, transportation assistance provided, I know I am not alone in the journey. The team is just one call away, and I know everyone wants to see me succeed. The impact this has made in my life is priceless, and I will use this to motivate a meaningful impact on those around me and the future patients that I serve as a medical assistant. Thank you for the opportunity to live a better life and achieve my dreams. I would now like to invite Ms. Sharon Gordon to speak. Thank you, Ms. Sharon Gordon, for all you have done for us.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Sharon Gordon Zeebold with Hillsborough County Social Services. I'm the Social Services Manager. Thank you, Dr. Morrison, for being here. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. And also thank you to our Community Action Board, those who are present and those who are not here, but I know that they're here in thought. So we are going to get ready to showcase a short video featuring the Community Action Board Scholarship Program. But as we prepare for that, on behalf of Social Services, we want to express our heartfelt gratitude to Commissioner Cohen for recognizing community action, and also the Board of County Commissioners, County Administrator Bonnie Wise, and Chief Human Administrator Carl Harness for their unwavering support and leadership. I also want to recognize our department leadership, Audrey Ziegler, the Department Director of Hillsborough County Social Services, and Maria Gillis, Division Director of Hillsborough County Social Services. We are thankful to everyone here today. Our partners, who some are here and some are not here, but we're thankful for our partners in education, youth, and our family empowerment programs. They have been instrumental in collaborating with Social Services Community Service Block Grant Empowerment Program. We also want to recognize our Social Services Case Management Team, who works with individuals and families by organizing services and providing ongoing support. And I would like to recognize Suncoast Career Academy, who are champions of community action, who are here today. When I state your name, if you could please stand so the audience can recognize who you are. Mr. Bradley Harrimanz, he's the Chief Executive Officer of Suncoast Career Academy. Then we have Ms. Tiffany Hamel, if you could please stand. She's the Executive Director of Suncoast Career Academy. And Ms. Lucille McCray, she is a graduate in pharmacy technician and also a staff member of Suncoast Career Academy. So we have a success story right here. So thank you for taking your time out to be here. And when we take photos, please join us. So now we're going to present a short video highlighting the Community Action Board Scholarship Program.
Students all over Hillsborough are taking control of their own futures. This is Sienna. She just finished an awesome first year.
I also make the DSA's list during spring. That's crazy. Didn't know I did that.
I know, right? But sometimes getting accepted to your top school is only the first of many challenges, right, Sue Haley?
I was accepted into a top school at the University of South Florida, but quickly began worried about how to pay for my tuition.
Hillsborough's Community Action Board Scholarship Program offers scholarships to eligible students wishing to continue their post-secondary education. The scholarships can be used at trade schools, community colleges, or four-year universities. But why take my word for it when a DSA's story is just perfection?
I held the CAB scholarship for four years. The CAB scholarship helped me pay for my tuition, course material, housing, and food. Because of my degree, currently I am working at Crowd Automotive Group's IT Department as a systems support staff.
And plenty of current students like Claire and Kishana are right on track.
I don't have any sort of financial support from my family, so the scholarship helps me to afford my necessary educational expenses.
That I can continue my education. I can continue being motivated to want to change the world.
And changing the world can take a bit of time. Just ask Leah.
With the CAB scholarship, I'm able to focus on my studies more instead of worrying about, you know, where I'm going to get the money from to do those studies.
The world may be changing, but this community is still our home, and Hillsborough County will always be a part of who we are.
Overall, it was very beneficial for me, and I feel like, you know, it encourages me to come back to Hillsborough County, to come back to the Tampa area, and give back to the community. That's absolutely what I want to do as a physician in the future.
While everyone's story is different, the one thing we'd all like to say is...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Now Commissioner Cameron Sapata will present the next proclamation.
Good morning. With the Honorable Denise Pomponio and the Honorable Catherine Esrig of the 13th Judicial Circuit, please join me at the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you both for joining us. The 13th Judicial Circuit's Problem Solving Court addresses many needs in our community. Their positive impacts are highlighted during Problem Solving Court Month in May, which brings attention to the countless lives saved, families reunited, and communities made safer, especially in Hillsborough County. The 13th Judicial Circuit's Problem Solving Courts are among the most successful in Florida and the nation. It is my honor to present this proclamation declaring May 2024 as Problem Solving Court Month, which salutes the hard work, commitment, and achievements made by practitioners and participants. It reads, "Whereas, problem-solving courts provide the focus and leadership to bring together criminal and civil justice, treatment, education, and other community partners in the fight against substance use and mental illness. And whereas, problem-solving courts combine intensive judicial supervision, evidence-based treatment, and individualized interventions in order to break the cycle of addiction and concomitant crime, and enable defendants to be productive, law-abiding members of society. Whereas, the judges, case managers, attorneys, treatment professionals, law enforcement, and corrections personnel, researchers, and educators, and others dedicated to the Problem Solving Court movement have had a profound impact through hard work and commitment to their communities. Whereas, the 13th Judicial Circuit offers a variety of problem-solving courts to help meet the diverse needs of the community, including Adult Drug Court, Adult Mental Health Court, Drug Pre-Trial Intervention Court, Early Childhood Court, Family Dependency Treatment Court, Juvenile Mental Health Court, Marchman Act Drug Treatment Court, and Veterans Treatment Court. And whereas, the 13th Circuit has a long history of innovation and leadership, including establishing the first post-adjudication court in Florida, the first juvenile drug court in Florida, and the Veterans Treatment Court, to be recognized as part of a federal program to help improve veterans' treatment courts nationwide. And whereas, in 2023, the 13th Judicial Circuit's Problem Solving Courts served 946 participants, including 103 children, either directly or through services provided to their parents through the dependency system. And whereas, Problem Solving Court Month recognizes the practitioners and participants who helped in the success of problem-solving courts and the significant contributions they have made and continue to make in reducing drug usage and crime in Florida and throughout the nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 2024 as Problem Solving Court Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages residents and visitors to recognize the positive impacts problem-solving courts have made in the community. Awarded this 15th day of May 2024."
Thank you. Thank you. There you go. Would you like to say a few words?
I'd like to have our Chief Judge, Chris Sabella, come up here, who makes this all happen.
You want me to say something?
Yes.
Don't be on the spot like that. Thank you. You know, most importantly, we couldn't do this without the hard work of all of the employees and the partnership that we have with the State Attorney's Office, the Public Defender's Office, and all of our justice partners that play a role in this. I remember a long time ago, when I was a new judge and we just started our Adult Drug Court, which was our first problem-solving court. And we have come so far since then, and I am so proud of all of the judges and all of the employees that are involved in it, and most importantly, all of the success stories that have come out of our problem-solving courts. I served for a period of time in the adult mental health, and it was just an absolute pleasure to see these individuals, who are at-risk individuals, who are charged sometimes with serious crimes, but who are given a second chance, an opportunity to comply with all of the requirements, and then to have their charges dismissed. And it is an absolute pleasure. I just attended a drug court graduation last week, and just to see how happy those individuals are once they've completed the program, it's just amazing. So I thank everyone, and it's an absolute pleasure to have a small part in it. Thank you.
I'd like to also recognize Judge Michael Shanti. Colonel Shanti is on military duty, but the work he does in our juvenile and adult mental health court and our veterans' treatment court, second to none, I'd put him up against anyone in the nation, the work that he does. But, Mr. Chairman and all the Commissioners, I want to thank you for the support that you give our problem-solving courts. It takes a team, and you're definitely part of the team. And I want to invite each one of you to come to my adult drug court or Drug Pre-Trial Intervention Court and watch what your support helps do, because it's amazing and it's heartwarming. And as a judge, I can tell you, there's no better satisfaction than going home when you're in a problem-solving court and knowing that you're helping people try to make their lives better and the road to sobriety and recovery. And I thank every one of you for helping us do that. Ms. Judge Esrig?
Some of these glasses are here. I just want to say thank you as well. You know, we've come a long way, courts nationally, locally, and here in the 13th Circuit. And the 13th Circuit has been a leader in many ways with these problem-solving courts. A lot of people are not aware of them. A lot of people don't understand them. The county has been an integral partner with us every step of the way, and we thank you. It's hard to have our backs to some of you. Sorry about that. But we really appreciate it, and we appreciate your bringing to light the fact that this is a special month and that it does recognize problem-solving courts. You know, we do things differently. You know, it used to be you just went to court and judges called balls and strikes, and people were guilty or not guilty. We now recognize that there's a lot more to it than that, and that we need to look at people who come before us as individuals, and we need to recognize why they might be there and what problems underlie them, and what sort of adverse traumatic events might have preceded their being there or might explain their being there. And so we really take a team approach with all of our community partners, both within the courts and outside the courts, to take a deep dive, to look at what's causing these issues, and to do our best to help solve them. We see some tremendous successes, and like Judge Pomponio said, I would invite you all to come and see the work we do. It's really not what you envision when you think of a typical court of law. And we really do a lot of good day in and day out, and we see so many wonderful things, and people progress from really some terrible circumstances to becoming meaningful, productive members of society. So thank you for playing a role in that. Thank you for your help in enabling us to do that. We have a whole team of people here. Is it all right if they all come up?
Can we have them come up for a photo?
Come on up.
Before we take a photo, Commissioner Owen wants to make a couple of comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments. Chief, thank you for being here, and thank you all for your hearts. You know, I think one other major component of a lot of these programs are the mentors that volunteer so much of their time, the DJ Reyes's and all these type of folks that I look up to that are heroes to me. I've spent a lot of time in these courtrooms. There's not many courtrooms you walk into and you leave happy with a tear in your eye. The tear may be in your eye, but maybe because you just got a big judgment against you. But these courtrooms are special places because, at the end of the day, we don't want people coming back to jail. We don't want recidivism. And a lot of this stuff surrounds by mental health and drug addiction or alcohol addiction. We recognize that in Hillsborough County. Our chief judge recognizes that in Hillsborough County. And I think it's very important that we understand that Hillsborough County is something to look to for other counties, not just how we handle it in the court system, but if you are in jail, we have these opportunities for vocational skills. Our sheriff does a great job of providing second chances and new opportunities, because the overwhelming people that are in jail, they don't belong there forever. There's about 8% to 10% of bad folks. We're going to keep them in there. But most of the other folks, we need to get them out into society, become productive members, and because of what you all do, that's one of the main reasons we're able to do that. So God bless you all. Thank you for your hearts, and I just want you all to know, we'll be here, and I'm looking forward to possibly a human trafficking treatment court judge. We're not giving up on that, so. All right. Thank you all. God bless you.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. And I'd just like to also thank you and recognize you all especially for the work you do. And I like the name Problem Solving Courts. And I appreciate the presentation that you've given and the explanation for the public to understand that this is what is going on in several of our courtrooms, and the fine work and dedication that you do, and also recognizing Judge Shanti as well, who isn't here today. But thank you all for your work in our county, and I'm glad to have the opportunity this morning for you to share that story of your work.
Okay.
The team, come on. Absolutely, the whole team.
Travis, you should have been in with us. Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. Okay, Bonnie, you want to review the change of the agenda?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one item that has been deleted. This is Item A17, which is to approve a resolution to send to the Florida Department of Transportation to port of lighting the Bob Graham Sunshine Skyway Bridge in red in honor of Sickle Cell Awareness Day on June 18. We have one item that is removed from consent for discussion or questions. This has been removed by Commissioner Wostol. It's Item A30. This is Select Award and Authorized Negotiations with Three Highest-Ranked and Best-Qualified Firms for the Opportunity to Provide Multifamily Development Projects for the Affordable Housing Services Department. We have several items for time certain. The first one is Item D1 at 10:00 a.m. This is to hold a public hearing and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 120 of the Hillsborough County Code regarding the Industrial Voice Water Discharge Regulation Ordinance in order to approve changes to the industrial pretreatment program that are required by state and federal law. Item D2, also at 10:00 a.m., is to conduct a public hearing to consider enacting an ordinance amending the Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances to revise the Hillsborough County Investment Policy to allow for the investment of county surplus funds and rated or unrated bonds, notes, or instruments backed by the full faith and credit of the Government of Israel, update a specific market index and industry regulation authority, and update the limited public records exemption referenced in the policy. Item B1 is at 10:30. This to accept the water meter reading to billing process report performed by the County Internal Auditor's Office. Item B2 at 10:45 is to adopt a resolution to amend and restate in its entirety related Item B2 at 10:45 is to adopt a resolution to amend or restate in its entirety related to the issuance of capital improvement program commercial paper notes of the county in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $300 million. This is to finance all or a portion of the costs of capital improvement projects, including but not limited to transportation projects, stormwater management projects, reclaimed water projects, and other capital improvement projects. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Can I have a motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers. Or Second Commissioner Owen, please record your vote on changes to the agenda.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, the Board will go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern, or your input is valued in terms of providing valuable input to Board members. However, at the same time, it's requested when you address the Board that comments are not directed at staff or the Board, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call on speakers by name, in which the order in which the requests to speak have been received. Please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. And also, if anyone speaks on a public hearing item during public comment, you will not be recognized during that public hearing. Okay, first three speakers this morning. David Coleman, Randy Toller, and Diane Hart. Good morning, Mr. Coleman.
Good morning, David Coleman. Hello, it's been almost a year since you took eight million from the Hope Organization, also one million from enterprising Latinas. Back then, the GOP came here to mock nonprofits and condemn the word equity. Since then, the future land use did an outreach, both the city live, grow, thrive, and the county. The number-one issues have always been housing and transportation. Since then, you have removed the waiver for impact fees on low-income first-time buyers. You have said that any county resources need to go to East and South County, ignoring a commitment to the urban core. You have said that in this room and at TPO meetings, you have cut budget to our election supervisor office. You have cut funding to the CIT for our public schools. This past Thursday and at a prior planning commission presentation, you heard from the public, they came about your urban service line expansion into unincorporated Odessa. They said no. They said no about South County development months ago. They came to say no in Town and Country about building on green space, and of course, not threatening our aquifer by opening up a brown field. They came to say yes to small projects adjacent to I-4 and a portion of a church property. This Board hasn't a clue and isn't listening. You have an affordable housing advisory board and a TPO in place already to give you ideas and information on the ground. You just keep pushing some imagined agenda about growth, about our growth, and what it should look like. Perhaps you should give those volunteers at the advisory board some staff so they can brainstorm at their meetings and bring you real solutions. Perhaps the Board needs to pay attention at our TPO meetings and not drive its own conceived agenda. The mayor says we won't need toilet to tap and that the answer to long-range water needs is conservation, yet Thursday, one item was to remove the requirement of submitting an irrigation blueprint for our future landscape projects. How ridiculous to hear, "Great, developers will save money." Housing, land use, transportation, and water are the most pressing issues of our 1.5 million residents. They know more than this Board. The people are coming. You saw that again Thursday night and this morning. The people won't stop.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. You've got Randy Toller, followed by Diane Hart and Leila Hayavi. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Randy Toller. I'm founder of the United States Green Party forty years ago. Pleased to be here to speak with you as well. I've been a politician for quite a while here in Hillsborough County. It's close to my wife, Alicia Toller. And I come to you today to ask you not to support purchases of Israeli bonds. I believe the Israeli leaders should be behind bars. I'm not sure what you're doing here. One thing that I did focus on really hard in the school board races was the budget, the $3 billion budget and the waste, the Gates grant with no exit strategy. You saw the mess that that created. Now, physical conservative ideas are a big part of this Board. Why would we invest in a country that's under UN scrutiny for war crimes? What are we doing here, guys? I saw Pat Kemp voted against it. I'm hopeful this time around, we'll see a much different outcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Diane Hart, followed by Leila Hayavi, and then Harrison Lundey. Good morning.
Good morning, Lord. I am Diane Hart, CEO of East Tampa Business and Community Development Alliance, where I serve as a CEO for the past 13 years. We are an affordable housing developer who has partnered with Hillsborough County for over 17 years. East Tampa is a certified CHODO, which is a community housing development organization. East Tampa has been a good partner. We finished our housing projects promptly and without any complaints. Housing is needed in our city and throughout the county. We get calls daily concerning the cost of housing and then inability to find decent, affordable housing, which is why we continue to apply for your RFPs through the county when they become available. Our mission is to help families have safe, affordable, decent housing. The item listed as A30 would allow East Tampa to either build new units or purchase and rehab units that will then be rented to individuals at below 80% AMI. We're proud of the work that we've done with Hillsborough County. The apartment complexes that we have purchased and rehab currently, everybody living in our complexes are at 80 and below. There is hardly anywhere in this county or city that you can find apartments with the rent that we can afford because of our partnerships with the county. So I am asking you all to please consider allowing A30 to go forward. This is a way that we can help families who otherwise will not be able to get that help. We have teachers that are homeless, that are living in their cars. We have people working right here for Hillsborough County that we have housed in some of the complexes that we own. But I am most proud of the fact that we can provide rents far below market, and that can only be done because of the partnership that we have had with Hillsborough County. So I'm asking you all to please favorably consider A30. Housing is desperately needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Leila Hayavi, Harrison Lundey, and then Sean Wilson. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Leila Hayavi. I'm with the Tampa Housing Authority. Want to support Diane Hart and her organization. She does great work. On behalf of the Tampa Housing Authority and its residents of the Palm Terrace Assisted Living Facility, I want to thank this Board of County Commissioners for your continued support for Agenda Item Consent, Agenda Item A3, which is the renovations to our assisted living facility that are currently happening. Palm Terrace Assisted Living Facility serves some of the most vulnerable citizens in our county by housing and providing supportive services for over 70 low, very low, and extremely low-income senior citizens, many of whom are veterans and would otherwise lack the resources available to afford an assisted living facility such as Palm Terrace. I would like to also recognize the work and thank the work of Assistant County Administrator Cheryl Howell, Director of Affordable Housing Services Department Brenda Brackens, and her staff for their dedication in serving the most vulnerable residents in our county. Affordable housing is incredibly necessary and needed and desperately needed in our county, so I want to thank the Affordable Housing Services Department for their dedication and hard work. Again, thank you very much for your support for Agenda Item A3. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Hayavi. Harrison Lundey, followed by Sean Wilson, and then Chloe Coney. Good morning.
All right. Excuse me. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Harrison Lundey. I'm here. I live in the Hillsborough County's 4th District in 33579. I just want to start out right away by expressing my dissent for Item D2, which, as mentioned before, discusses the possible process for investing in bonds in Israel. I believe that this is something that the county should divest from. We need to be clear that there is a genocide that's happening in Palestine, with the death toll passing 35,000 the other day, including 14,000 kids. The Israel government and the Defense Forces that have been perpetrating this violence against a nation that has nearly nothing left, but their torn-and-bombed communities is not something that our county should be investing in. Another thing that I found out recently is that the Sheriff's Office here, as well as TPD, joined many other police forces in this state in literally cross-training with IDF forces. They're trained in what's known as counterterrorism, which I guess includes college campus students standing up a tent on campus? Like, it's almost unreal how absurd that sounds out loud, but you have to remember, it was your constituents who were tear-gassed earlier this month and were brutalized by police in riot gear. So I am joining other organizers in working to implement a call program in the area, which focuses on community care while making sure that police don't have to respond to nonviolent and noncriminal incidents. It's gotten notable support, but what kind of message are we sending to our community if our call programs have to share space with the same police forces that are cross-trained to brutalize people? This reminds me of a few meetings back, there was an employee with fire rescue that came up here and stressed that they urgently need new stations, they needed new resources, and that's not even getting to the lack of infrastructure improvement, the cost of living. We heard that water was also a very big local issue. And if nothing else, I just don't want this county to be known for the one that put that type of investment behind investing in a violent genocide-funded government. The issues that exist here are too big to ignore, and people shouldn't be brutalized or surveilled for exercising their right to dissent this practice across governments and universities. But the people in this county, you know, your constituents, should not have to put their needs on hold, because our county funds are going to finance a genocide rather than the quality of people's life. So I just wanted the Board to consider that as they move into the public hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sean Wilson, followed by Chloe Coney, and then Vanessa McCleary. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, and staff, and citizens, and members of the public of Hillsborough County. My name is Sean Wilson, and I'm the President of Blue Sky Communities. I resent the term genocide. I support statements and actions in support of the State of Israel as a proud Jewish person and as a proud American, regardless of one's denomination. I want to get that out of the way, given the prior comments. I'm here in support of my own item on A30. A30 is a recommendation to award funding to three affordable housing developments. We were the highest scoring, 95. The next one scored 56. We're the lowest request amount, 610,000. We're the most units. I'm not sure why this was pulled for discussion. I welcome the discussion. The Board has the leeway to approve one, or two, or all three, based on the RFP and based on the procurement process. So if you're so inclined, keep that in mind, please, when you discuss this item. Rio Palma is our development. It's at 7,200 Causeway Boulevard. It's in the Palm River redevelopment area, and it is going to be 90 units in a four-story building similar to Uptown Sky, which we have on Fletcher. It's a great deal for the county. This is going to be funded under the 9% tax credit program. This is a capitalistic program that's been around for 40 years. You can be proud that you're participating in a program that was championed by Ronald Reagan and has been supported by members of both parties in Tallahassee, on this dais, and the federal government for 40 years. That's the 9% housing program. Why is it great? Because we're bringing to the table, with your 610,000, we're going to bring to the table $4 million of private loan money that's going to come from a bank, and $27 million are going to be invested by Raymond James or another investor through the Federal Housing Credits Program. That has nothing to do with the taxes collected by the county or the state. It's a federal income tax program. This is going to be a high-quality development on par with everything that we've built before, and I just think you have a lot of reasons to want to support Rio Palma. It's in a good spot. It's well-leveraged. You know that we have a great track record, so I thank you for your support, and I am here to answer any questions or address any discussion items when A30 comes up later. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Chloe Coney, followed by Vanessa McCleary, and then Melissa Nordbeck. Good morning, Ms. Coney.
Good morning, County Commissioners. I'm Chloe Coney, a woman that wear many hats. Thirty years ago, 32 years ago this month, I am the founder of CDC of Tampa. I am so glad that they are moving people from poverty to self-sufficiency. I want to thank you, County Commissioners, for your continued support over these 32 years, especially in housing, as they build new homes, both in the city and in the county, as they have worked with Diana Gardens, building townhouses, as well as Amature, which is a rental. So you have been very supportive over those 32 years, and I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm here today to ask you for the $5 million funding. The CDC is looking to build 24 new townhouses, and these will be homeownership. That's very critical. And it is located in your Orient Road area, Eastlake, and I know you have that area as your targeted neighborhood here, that the county is looking at, as well as HUD. This project will generate $80 million in economic impact. We know you're going to have local companies that are going to be hiring local people for this job. They're going to be able to provide property insurance, lawn maintenance, supporting local businesses, and paying property taxes. We know that these 24 new homeowners will give them the opportunity to own a home and create generational wealth. I'm strongly supporting the new housing projects at CDC and the East Tampa Business and Civic Association and Blue Sky, because they're bringing new affordable homes, or housing, in our under-resourced neighborhoods. We know that this funding is federal and state and should be used for affordable housing. Again, I want to thank you for listening to me this morning. We know that housing is a human right, and we also know that Hillsborough County and affordable housing is a critical need. So thank you for listening to me again, and God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Coney. Vanessa McCleary, followed by Melissa Nordbeck, and then Robin Lockett. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Vanessa McCleary. I'm the Vice President of Real Estate Development for the CDC of Tampa. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item and for pulling it so that people could understand the importance of affordable housing. Mr. Wastle, who pulled the item, is actually my Commissioner. I live in Citrus Park. I recently was at an event last night where they presented the Regional Competitive Summary Report, and it talked about the fact that Tampa ranks last out of 20 different jurisdictions in the country in terms of housing affordability. One of the things that we know in this area is that it is a great place to live, and there are a lot of people moving here, and that makes the market very competitive. So when we apply for funding, we have to request additional subsidies, because the cost of everything has gone up. The cost of land has gone up, the cost of insurance has gone up, the cost of taxes has gone up. It makes it harder and harder for families to afford. The rents keep going up, and our schools suffer because of it. Through affordable housing, we are trying to stabilize communities. Rentals are great, but homeownership gives people stake in property. It allows them to get a one-time subsidy versus monthly subsidies. So these 24 townhomes that we are building will be homeownership. We will allow people to have the opportunity to stabilize their housing costs, stabilize their families, have children that can stay in the same schools for more than one school year. So we strongly urge you to approve Items A30 and A31, and understand that this is helping to address the issues that have been identified in Hillsborough County when it comes to housing affordability. We need more affordable homeownership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCleary. You've got Melissa Nordbeck, followed by Robin Lockett, and then Humair Absal. Good morning.
Good morning, Melissa Nordbeck. Today's staff report on large-scale events occurring in AR zonings is setting the stage for a change to the Land Development Code to prohibit any activity that does not fall under the category of agritourism. The report signals out concerts, but could also include weddings, fun... The report signals out concerts, but could also include weddings, fundraisers, holiday events, or any large gathering. Presently, state law prohibits local governments from restricting or regulating these types of events unless they can identify substantial off-site impacts, like noise and safety, the key word being substantial. Hillsborough County has a county noise control ordinance. The county also has requirements for fire safety provisions and inspections. Miami-Dade County allows rural events with a permit. Polk County places restrictions on the off-site impacts. The staff report is extreme in suggesting a ban instead of implementing a permit policy. Also adding "occurring near residential property" in the title is unnecessary and alarmist to garner favor from the public. These rules are in place for all AR zonings, even if the nearest neighbor is half a mile away. First, you expand the urban service area. Then you approve utilities in the rural area for development. And now you want to ban income-generating events on agriculture property. Your continued assault on rural citizens is not going unnoticed.
Thank you, Ms. Nordbeck. Robin Lockett, followed by Humira Absal, and then Sierra Medina. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Robin Lockett, and I am in support of the item number 830. Are you aware that there is still a housing crisis? Are you aware that renters and aspiring homeowners are being priced out from within the city and being forced out into the county? Some of you have new constituents. I hear often that sidewalks, 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 those new constituents that are being pushed out of the city are now your constituents. The nonprofits have been, were and have been, the fabric of the community. The partnership, nonprofits that have appeared here, I haven't heard any one of them say you're funding our item 100%. It's a partnership. I thrive on taxpayer money, other people's money. It's a partnership. And why the focus on pulling these items is baffling to me, because we are in a housing crisis. The city of Tampa is in a housing crisis. The county is in a housing crisis. People can't afford rent. People can't even afford homes. But you're putting these nonprofits in jeopardy instead of partnering more with them, to be honest. You made your point when you pulled $8 million from Hope. That was a travesty. But it appears it's nitpicking these nonprofits, and I'm not sure why. Your sidewalks won't do any good without houses on them for people to walk up. So I'm not here to badger. I'm just here to state that we need affordable housing. Renters are being priced out of the city, and they're being forced to the county. So they are now your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three speakers, Humira Absal, followed by Sierra Medina and Denise Herndon. Good morning.
Hi, Humira Absal. Going to be fun today. We're in a housing crisis, and we need the commission to start focusing more on problems that affect people in Hillsborough County. Lots of things to fix right here, high cost of living, high water bills, high electric bills, and we're all bracing for another TCO increase. It's a skyrocketing cost of housing for almost everyone, but especially lower-income residents. But you're instead putting your time and energy into things like trying to prop up the economies of other countries. I want everyone here in the room to hear that the commission is more interested in helping another country than in helping the residents of this county get housing they can afford. I'm referring to the proposal to change the county investment policy to allow taxpayer dollars to be invested in one specific country, Israel. Today, having a public hearing, we're having a public hearing just so the county can invest in one specific country. So much time and energy that could have been spent on fixing the problems right here in this county. Playing politics with taxpayer dollars seems to be more important than fixing problems here at home. Back to housing. This commission has consistently been axing funds for affordable housing and prioritizing pouring asphalt for sprawl, because people have to drive so far out to find less expensive housing, instead of getting more residents in housing they can afford. Let me in for now with this. Cutting housing funds in Hillsborough County so fewer affordable homes will be built. Meanwhile, you want to invest in Israel. Wait, there's a housing connection here. While Hillsborough County wants to invest in Israel, Israel is blowing up all the housing in Gaza. Few headlines. World Bank report finds 45% of residential buildings in Gaza ruined beyond repair. Associated Press, the unprecedented destruction of housing in Gaza hasn't been seen since World War II, the United Nations say. Fix the housing here, quit giving money for countries to blow up housing for other people overseas.
My last three speakers. Sierra Medina, followed by Denise Herndon, and then Ellsworth Williams will be the last speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Sierra Medina. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I'm here to discuss the ongoing issue we have in this county with loose and aggressive dogs. Since moving to my home in Brandon, I have attempted to get help multiple times from animal control, which has been a fruitless endeavor. I started a case where I provided video and photo evidence of dogs advancing on my husband and myself while I was pregnant. Due to the taking two weeks for them to finally arrive at my house, the dogs were nowhere to be found, and nothing happened. After that initial call, I reached back out to them, asking how I was going to keep my family safe to even go on walks. The response was to bring a bat with me on my walk so I can attempt to beat the loose dogs off of my family and pets. On Sunday, April 28th, my aunt, who's also my neighbor, reached out to help from the sheriff's office and animal control for yet another pair of loose pit bulls that literally ripped a cat in half right across the street from her house. She begged and pleaded for help, and once again, our designated officials failed and refused to arrive. Had they come on that day, those specific dogs could have been removed before a tragedy happened. The next day, on Monday, April 29th, not even 36 hours after my aunt's initial phone call, I woke up to the sounds of my elderly neighbor being violently mauled by two loose pit bulls. It actually took me about 30 seconds to realize that it was not the sounds I hear from the dogs killing other animals, but the horrific wail of my neighbor fighting for her life. Let that sink in. I hear animals being ripped apart by other animals so often that I thought that her screams were that of an animal. My aunt and I had no choice but to shoot one of the dogs twice, while I ran across the street to use makeshift tourniquets so that my poor neighbor didn't bleed out in front of me. If my aunt and I had not intervened, she would surely be dead. What's worse is we got no help from our supposed protectors until it was too late. Something needs to be changed in this county, whether that be more animal control officers or more extensive fines. There are only 20 animal control officers and five investigators in this large county across all shifts. It should not come to someone almost dying for something to change. How can we trust our officers and enforcers when they can't even protect us when they were warned over and over again? The owners of those pit bulls still have more aggressive dogs that the county has yet to remove from that property. Somehow, the rights of those owners is greater than the safety of our children, baby and elderly, and the rest of the neighborhood. We are not scared of if this will happen again, but when it will happen again if nothing is done. What will you do to fight for us, your people? What else needs to happen to your citizens, taxpayers, and families for something to be done about these preventable tragedies? Will you fight for the change and growth required to protect the people, or will you stand by and do nothing while more innocent people fear for their lives? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Denise Herndon, followed by Ellsworth Williams. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. There are several topics I want to talk on here. We, early colonists, and then our early government, nearly annihilated the Native Americans. This was what our government did. Israel didn't start this war, but they're going to finish it. And when 9/11 happened, our government started renditions, and I've only heard of a few where our government labeled renditions. Like I said, Israel didn't start this war, but they're going to finish it. Hamas is in the UN, and it's been known that the UN had terrorists attacking Israel. The other issue I want to talk about is the CIT tax that you commissioners had decided to take 20% away from our school infrastructure. This money, 20%, is nothing more than commissioners' pet projects. Just me, as an individual, going around these swells or humps that are put over people's driveway to change the interruption of the natural flow of water should be paid by those individual owners, not by Hillsborough County. Another thing that I've noticed, going to the library, some of them are freezing cold. At the last town hall meeting, not the last one, the April 30th one, I couldn't even speak because it was so cold in there. On the May 7th, I went to the library, and it was so cold in there. I found out that all ACs are controlled somewhere for the libraries in different places here at Hillsborough County. I don't know why you don't have individual thermostats with lock boxes on them so that those businesses don't have to depend on somebody downtown controlling them. It must have been an awesome lobbyist, which is nothing but a salesman, that convinced the Hillsborough County to take care of all of the ACs at one place. I'd like to know how much the electric bill went up when this was instituted. You guys can look into your $9 billion budget to help fund affordable housing. As far as Israel, money going for bonds on them, maybe you're going to make money with it, because there does need to be a lot of home rebuilding. But like I said, Israel didn't start this war, but they're going to finish it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellsworth Williams, the last speaker this morning. Good morning, sir.
Glad to turn this on? Anybody know? All right, good. Well, I can't believe I've been here so often as long as I've lived here. How you doing? I'm Ellsworth Williams. I'm the CEO and president for Veterans Council and Veterans, 3810 West Kennedy Boulevard. What I'm here today is to make you aware of a special event we're occurring. We all know in May, the end of May, we all celebrate Memorial Day to honor the veterans, brothers and sisters who died in combat and thereafter. What I want to preach today is that there are also families out there, and veterans, who have lost a veteran or a first responder to suicide. And what we do, this is our 10th one, we do, on 25th of May, we have a special ceremony just for them. It gives them a safe space to come and honor that veteran and their families without worrying about the stigma. But that has a second purpose also. If we invite the first responders or veterans to that, in act of duty, it will break that romanticism that if I die, then everybody will be better off. And we all know that is not true. It's an everlasting curse. I want to thank Commissioner Sepeda for being there again. I really appreciate you for being keynote speaker. And I'm just here to also, just to highlight that, don't forget about those who have died by suicide and the first responders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate your comments. All right, that closes the public comment. Again, I want to repeat, anyone that spoke on item D2 will not be recognized during that public hearing. All right, can we have a motion to approve the consent? Second motion by Commissioner Wallstill, second Commissioner Kemp on the consent agenda. Please accord your vote.
Motion, Chair, is seven to zero.
Commissioner Myers, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, I'd like first to waive the rules to address with A-30. I'm not sure if I'm in order when it's supposed to come.
A-30, I think it's going to come out at the end of the meeting. Oh, you want to...
Waive the rule so we can address A-30 now.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking. So I can get a motion to address.
Motion by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp on waiving the rules to take up A-30 at this time. Please accord your vote.
Motion, Chair, is seven to zero.
Body.
Okay. Item A-30 is to select an award up to the three highest-ranking best-qualified firms for multifamily development projects, and Scott Stromer is here to present this item. Sorry for my stalling. I wanted to make sure he was here.
Good morning, Scott Stromer, Perimeter Services. Again, A-30 is asking the board to approve the selection and award and authorize negotiations for three firms for affordable housing, following an open and transparent process. Blue Sky Communities LLC for 90 housing units using Hope funding at $610,000. The second is CDC of Tampa, 24 housing units using SHIP funds at $5,757,917. And East Tampa Business Community Development Alliance, 12 units, using CDBG money at $3.2 million. And Perimeter Services recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wallstill, you pulled this item.
Can you distinguish the funding and which organization's getting what? Again, that was one of the two reasons I pulled this, is because there's a lack of clarity on the fact that Hope funds are people's property taxes, and it's supposed to be being done that any time that there is property taxes in this regard being spent, that it would be made clear. But in the write-up, it wasn't. So can you clearly distinguish that again for me on who's getting what?
Sure. Blue Sky Communities is Hope funding. CDC of Tampa, I believe, is SHIP funding. And East Tampa Business Community Development Alliance is CDBG funding.
Okay, so it was, I didn't know which company was getting what, but it was even said during public comment that there's different funding sources and that they're matching. But in reality, these are people's property taxes that are being used to subsidize developers to build homes. That's exactly what this is. In Hillsborough County, in the unincorporated area, I believe that the total millage rate that is taken from a home is 19 and 1/2. In the cities, it's somewhere around 20 and 1/2 total mills. The average home in Hillsborough County is $350,000. The average millage rate would then be 20 mills per home, so in reality, that's $7,000 a year on the average home of property taxes that are taken from residents of Hillsborough County. The average median income in Hillsborough County, family median income, is $60,000 a year. That means that over 10% of a family's average median income in Hillsborough County goes to property taxes. That's an invisible tax that no one really sees or understands, and I think that it is economically and fundamentally wrong to use people's property taxes that they can't avoid to go towards subsidizing development of homes for other individuals. That is my first reason that on all of these, I want them to be pulled, and my opportunity to say no. The second is that I've expressed my concerns about this multiple times. I feel like this is the third time around. I'm going to be bringing a future item at the end. One of these organizations is operated by an elected public officer. I believe that it is fundamentally breach of trust to the voters of Hillsborough County. It reeks of potential insider trading between elected officials. And during future items, I will be bringing forward an item to determine the eligibility to put forward an ordinance to restrict such acts from continuing to happen with public officers in Hillsborough County. So with that, I will leave it to the rest of the board. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to go ahead and move for approval for item A-30. The three companies, organizations have met the county requirements through the RFP process, and so that's my motion is to move for approval.
I'm going to motion approve. Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yeah, respectfully, I think that's a dangerous reason to move for an approval on something like this. I too, I'm interested in, I have no problem with the project, as a matter of fact, where it's located, the Blue Sky that's handling it. I know they do a great job from what I've seen. But I am a little bit concerned, or a lot concerned, about the issue related to if a elected official is receiving a form of taxpayer dollars to their organization, or even an organization that they receive a salary from. I really don't know all the rules on this. I'd like to know the federal, and maybe that'll be part of your future item. Can somebody in Congress fund with taxpayer dollars their company or an organization they're affiliated with? I don't think the answer to that would be yes. Again, I don't know, but I think that is a great future item to bring if you would include that possibly, because I look at it if it's the flip side. This has nothing to do with political parties or anything. To me, it just seems a little bit dangerous if we're using taxpayer dollars to fund organizations or any organizations that salaries are received from an elected or any organizations that salaries are received from an elected official, regardless if you're Republican, Democrat, independent, or NPA. So I do definitely think that's something to look at, and I appreciate this being pulled for that reason. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
And I'm not gonna go back and forth on this issue, but when I was an employee here, we had several former Board of County Commissioners who ran nonprofit organizations, who were the CEOs of nonprofit organizations here in Hillsborough County. In the state of Florida today, we have CEOs and presidents that's running nonprofits organizations. So when staff, when you pull this information, you should be able to see what we have, not only here in Hillsborough County, but in the state of Florida as well. And on the last note I'm gonna share with us, because Diane Hart, who is an elected official, who is the CEO of the East Tampa Organization, Betty Wiggins, the late Betty Wiggins was my sorority sister, and Betty asked Diane Hart, on her dying bed, to be the CEO of her organization. That's how Diane became the CEO and with the board's support. So it wasn't that she ended up being the CEO because she's an elected official. She became the CEO before she was an elected official. So once we receive the history and understand from our nonprofits, just meet with them and talk with them to see how did they arrive at that, then we'll have some of the information that we want to share at our board meeting. So I'm gonna leave it there, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go around, again, I just want to say, these firms follow the RFP process. They were the highest ranking firms. I'm open, actually will support considering changing a policy for future projects, future RFPs, but they abide by the rules. I'm gonna support the item. Commissioner Walstall?
Yeah, I just want to make, none of that history has absolutely anything to do with what I'll be asked for. This is talking about current elected officials, not former ones. This is talking about current elected officials. There's tons of state laws that have prohibitions on even former elected officials from lobbying for appropriations, much less current elected officials. So this is a big deal to me, and the history of an organization on its face has nothing meaningful to what I'm going for in restrictions. So I'll just, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I just want to, again, I was just going to state the same thing that Commissioner Haggen stated. These have been, gone through an RFP process, they've been approved. They actually, the funding comes, I think, from one federal, one local, and one state organization rather than one place or one entity. And I think the appropriate way to handle this, if you believe it's a conflict of interest, and I don't know what the, any rules are, is to bring it up separately because this has, you know, been the process for some time, and to bring it up afterwards and approve these projects now because they have made it through the RFP process.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Owen to Walstall, voted no.
All right, Bonnie, want to introduce the first item?
The first item is item D1. This is a public hearing regarding the Industrial Waste Water Discharge Regulation Ordinance to Comply with State and Federal Law. Vivian Arenas Sattles from the County Attorney's Office will present this item. This is a public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, it's Vivian Arenas Sattles with the County Attorney's Office. D1 is to consider approving an amendment to the Industrial Waste Water Discharge Regulation Ordinance in order to comply with new state and federal laws and regulations, and a request by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to implement these new laws and regulations. It's also to consider adopting a resolution approving the Industrial Pre-Treatment Program Local Limits and providing for future updates to be adopted by board resolution, and to consider a second resolution approving the internal procedures for the Enforcement Response Plan and again, providing for future updates to be adopted by board resolution. The ordinance and the resolutions were noticed in accordance with state law. Staff recommends approval, and Mr. Kevin Moran, the Division Director, and Jeff Greenwell, Section Manager with Environmental Services, are both available to answer any questions regarding technical issues. I'm also available to answer any questions, and this is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. We have two individuals that have signed up to speak. Denise Herndon in person, and then a Yawar Nenzi, which is virtual. Is Ms. Herndon here?
Good morning again. I'm Denise Herndon. Some things that I didn't mention before, this CIT that you commissioners have decided to change, we voters can vote it down. That's how we can keep the 25% going to the schools and not for pet projects of county commissioners. You commissioners need to look into your $9 billion budget and see where you can find funding that doesn't need to be spent. I mentioned too, the central control of ACs in public buildings when, at the Palm River Library, they have a security guard and a sheriff deputy there. The security guard stays in a little alcove before you go into the library. He's thankful that he doesn't have to sit in the library where it's so freezing cold. There's no reason. The other day, I was at the Brandon Library, 75 degrees. Why does it need to be 75 degrees?
Ma'am, do your comments have anything to do with D1?
I don't remember what D1's about.
Okay, well, we need to keep it to D1, which is-
What is the D1 about?
An Industrial Waste Water Discharge Regulation Resolution and Ordinance.
Okay. As far as the discharge of wastewater, where is this discharge being, happened at? How is it destroying our natural resources? Why do we need to discharge wastewater when there aren't storms going on? There should be some way, somewhere that things could be taken care of. There's supposed to be reclaimed water for discharge. We can have fertilizer for this, made fertilizer instead of mosaic, digging up our property for contaminated chemicals. There's all types of things that this county can do and look at better resources for what we are spending our money on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Is there a Yawar Nenzi on the line?
Chairman, she did not check in.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up. Pro-Camera motion on the ordinance-
Move approval.
And the two resolutions. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. No comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next item?
Thank you. The next, the next item is item D2. This is also a public hearing regarding consideration changes to the county's investment policy. And Joseph Kudme from the County Attorney's Office is here. Tim Simon from the Clerk's Office is also here with any questions, too.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Good morning, Commissioners Joseph Kudme, County Attorney's Office. Item D2 is a public hearing to consider enacting an ordinance amending the county's investment policy. The proposed ordinance included in your backup provides for four changes to the existing investment policy as directed by the board, including authorizing an investment in rated or unrated notes, instruments, or bonds backed by the full faith and credit of the government of Israel. This public hearing was advertised in accordance with applicable law. If there are any questions, I or Tim Simon from the Clerk's Office are available. It would now be appropriate to take public comment.
All right, thank you. All right, well, members, we've got 66 individuals that have signed up to speak. As is customary, I would entertain a motion for each person to have two minutes. Is that moved? Motion by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, first three speakers this morning, it will be David Coleman, followed by Franklin Perez, and then Ilum Laurhill. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, David Coleman. Other countries need to fix their own economic messes. The special support of one specific country by this board is problematic and troubling. You are changing county investment policy to benefit one specific country. No other country or non-US entity would receive the special treatment paid for by Hillsborough County taxpayers. Hillsborough County has a very diverse population. Makes no sense for a commission to be trying to prop up the economy of one specific country unless it is politically motivated. Many residents are against investing in Israel or any other individual country. Many residents would like to see millions of our 2.3 billion savings go into rapid housing or shelters for our most needy. We still have 4,000 kids in our schools with no permanent address, 100 a year dying homeless on our streets. We all remember when the Hindus receiving an award in this room were condemned for the word Hindu being a religion. We should all remember that when the Israeli flag was brought in for proclamation supporting Israel, that the prayer that morning ended in, "In Jesus' name we pray." We should all remember that half the board refused to sign the Pride proclamation. I do believe you have doubled down on a way to condemn the gay community again. I am sure you see my point about hypocrisy. I suppose in your eyes, it would also be hypocritical of me if I asked for a proclamation for a ceasefire, except that a ceasefire means finding a way forward with no more killing on either side. What does after look like? No home at all for Palestinians living there for 4,000 years? Or no home for Jews that have roots going back 4,000 years? The only answer is peace.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Got Franklin Perez, followed by Ilum Laurhill, and then Neura Hassan Skaden. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Franklin Perez. I live in Seminole and Hillsborough Counties. Please rescind all pro-Israel resolutions you have made in the past, and definitely vote no on buying Israeli government bonds due to the following. Enough, Israel is a Jewish supremacist apartheid state that has been committing ethnic cleansing, human rights abuses, and now genocide against Palestinians for 75-plus years as per reputable human rights organizations like Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, and Betsalem. Stop supporting Israel. Stop giving it weapons. Stop giving it money and condemn it for what it is, an apartheid and genocidal state. The Israeli apartheid regime's Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu has invoked genocidal language against Palestinians in the Gaza concentration camp by referring to an ancient biblical passage in the Old Testament, comparing Palestinians to a malakite that must all be put to death, men, women, children, infants. Miko Pella, Israeli Jew, son of a famous Israeli Jew general, ex-Zionist occupation forces enforcer, and Palestinian rights activist, has stated that the Israeli army is the best terrorist group in the world. At this point, due to scattered Zionists only occupying settlements in the West Bank, the only first solution to the Israel-Palestine conflict is a one-state solution where everyone, Jew and Palestinian, has equal rights in a free Palestine. The refrain that Israel has the right to self-defense is a red herring. The real question is, does Israel have the right to use force to maintain an illegal occupation and apartheid state that commits ethnic cleansing, genocide, and human rights abuses against Palestinians? The clear answer is no. Our tax dollars should be going back to our own communities, not to support unrelenting bombing and genocide in Gaza. No more money for Israel's crimes. I request that you vote no on buying Israeli government bonds and introduce a resolution to stand with Palestinians in demanding an end to the siege of Gaza, a permanent ceasefire, and an end to all USA to Israel, military, economic, political. Ceasefire now, and do not purchase any Israeli government bonds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Is there a Ilum Laurhill, I believe, followed by Neura Hassan Skaden and Tariq Absal? Good morning.
Good morning. I'm sorry for the name. It's quite complicated. So my name is Ilum Laurhill. I am a fresh citizen of the United States, two years now. I really enjoy Hillsborough County, the services, the Sheriff Department, making us all safe and enjoying the parks and everything. But as a new citizen, still trying to navigate the Constitution and the law in the country, I'm just, my understanding of the Constitution is that everything federal is foreign affairs, foreign policy, defense, et cetera, international cooperation. Everything states, stays within the state's boundaries, and everything county stays within the county boundaries as well. So everything, schools, roads, of course, safety and law enforcement, et cetera. So when I see the county using an investment fund of its resources being used in foreign policy, this is kind of confusing, and confusing to many constituents of Hillsborough County. I am for every department to stay within their own prerogatives or, in common words, business, so county doing county business. And this meeting, and this hearing, and many those held every day show that the county is already busy. So the county getting involved in international policy, to me, it's incompetent. It's not within the competency of the county anyway, or again, it's prerogatives. So, and I'm finding hard time understanding how a county that is in charge of building an education system is financing another country that is destroying an education system.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Next three speakers, Neura Hassan Skaden, Tariq Absal, and then Megan Amir. Good morning.
Hamira Absal, don't change the ordinance.
No, ma'am, I didn't call you up to speak. You've already spoken. I'm sorry.
No, I've signed up-
No, ma'am, I'm sorry, you've already spoken. I made that very clear.
I've signed up separately for the public hearing.
Deputy, please escort, please escort Ms. Absal out of the room. We're not gonna play these games, ma'am. The next three speakers, Neura Hassan Skaden, followed by Tariq Absal, and then Megan Amir. And I stated on two separate occasions, if you speak during the public hearing during the initial public comment, you will not be recognized. Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for your patience. I am here as a constituent and as a new resident-
Please state your name, please state your name for the record.
My name is Neura Hassan Skaden. I am a new resident in Tampa. Clearly, I'm a mother. I am here to, I guess, ask some questions and oppose the line item D2. It's very strange that our county would be investing in these Israeli bonds for the first time in the context of the world theater that we're in right now. I appreciate Commissioner, I can't read your name, Joshua pointing out that there are, it's your fiduciary duty to take care of our taxpayer dollars. When we are looking at, you know, an investment in a country that has been indicted for, you know, mass atrocities, it's very, it's very disorienting to think about what the return on investment is gonna be there. It seems like a political move versus actually protecting your constituents' interests. So many of us are coming from different places. I don't know if you're aware that you have a very, very large Palestinian community here in the Tampa Bay area as well. A move such as this, it's quite unconscionable, actually, to invest in a country that has a very, very high rate of civilian casualties and what these investments are gonna be going towards. The Israeli military is already sucking a lot of our federal funds. I'm not sure what you guys are doing, investing county funds as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming down. Appreciate your comments. Tariq Absal, followed by Megan Amir, and then Angel DiAngelo. Good morning.
Hello, I'm Tariq Abhil. Here's some of the headlines I came across when researching whether investing in Israel made sound financial sense. Israel's $16 billion war bill puts budget on alarming trajectory. Bloomberg, May 2024. Israel on track to run widest budget deficit this century. Bloomberg, May 2024. White House officials will not attend Israel Bonds Conference headed by far-right Israeli minister. The Forward, March 2023. Jewish people, rabbis, and allies block center city traffic. Call for divestment from Israel. NBC Philadelphia, this was yesterday. Moody's Ratings affirms Israel's A2 ratings. Outlook remains- Outlook remains negative. Moody's, May 2024. Man-made famine. Charge against Israel is backed by mounting body of evidence. The Guardian, March 2024. Planned judicial changes could weaken Israel's institutional strength. Moody's, March 2023. S&amp;P cuts Israel's credit rating on heightened geopolitical risk. Reuters, April 2023. Israel not complying with world court order in genocide case. Human Rights Watch, February 2024. S&amp;P affirms Israel's credit ratings warns of persistent domestic regional risks. The Times of Israel, May 2023. Rights expert finds reasonable ground.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Megan Amir, followed by Angel DiAngelo, and then Mary Lee Marks. Is Megan here? Okay, if not, is Angel DiAngelo, is virtual? Is Angel on the phone?
Chairman, did not check in.
Okay. We got Mary Lee Marks, followed by Joe Probasco, and Matthew Levine.
Sorry, I'm Mary Lee Marks. I didn't know if the person online checked in.
Yes, she did.
Okay, great. Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Mary Marks. I come before you as the Policy Manager for CARE Florida and as an international relations and U.S. foreign policy professional. I also come before you as a devout Christian woman. While I firmly believe in the separation of church and state as a core principle of this country, I'm guided by my belief and instructions to love above all else, to love my neighbor as myself, to sacrifice for that person. It's the greatest thing that we can do. I've written an in-depth policy analysis on this motion that I have available today for you. I've studied international law for many years, worked overseas, and have served as staff in the U.S. Senate. International human rights law, U.S. foreign policy, and Florida law all prohibit support of another country guilty of human rights and war crimes and purchase for ideological reasons. I urge you to consider your responsibility to the people of Tampa. In my analysis, I detail experts weighing in on the economic health of Israel, the overextension of loans, sales of bonds, crumbling trade relationships, sanctions, end to diplomatic ties, reductions in economic measurements of GDP, banking sectors by Fitch, S&amp;P, Moody, IMF, and OECD. Israel has sold billions of dollars of bonds around the world, especially since October 7th. They're in deep deficit, and these bonds will come due. How will the interest be paid? After the ICJ and ICC finished their investigation of genocide, U.N. states will be able to freeze government and personal assets. Both political parties talk a big game about taking care of America first. Buy American-made products, bring jobs back to America, invest in America. We've heard countless people this morning talk about the needs here in Tampa Bay that have been cut by state and county funds. We have so many shortages in teacher staff, first responder budgets, housing crisis, et cetera. I'll leave you with this. Multiple countries have divested their pension funds from Israel as they are no longer considered safe or ethical. The Presbyterian and United Methodist churches have also divested.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Appreciate it. Joe Probasco, Joe Probasco here, followed by Matthew Levine, and then Jeffrey Berger, which is virtual. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joe Probasco, and I'm the immediate past president of the Tampa Jewish Community Centers and Federation. My wife and I live here in Hillsborough County, and have called the city of Tampa home for over 20 years. I'm here today to voice my support for the proposed revision to the Hillsborough County investment policy, which if approved would allow for the investment of Hillsborough County surplus funds into what are known colloquially as Israel bonds. It's important to note two points at the outset. First, the issue to be decided today is simply permissive, to allow for the investment of county surplus funds into Israel bonds. This does not obligate the county to make any particular investment nor commit to a particular investment of any size. It simply provides the county with discretion to make such investments should the county determine an investment would align with its overall investment strategy and otherwise satisfy its fiduciary obligations to the citizens of Hillsborough County. Second, if approved, Hillsborough County would not be a first mover on this issue, but rather joining numerous other states and municipalities who have invested since the state of Israel started offering bonds in 1951. In fact, since Hamas attacked Israel on October 7th, over $1.7 billion of Israel bonds have been purchased by more than 35 states, counties, cities, and municipalities. Purchases include our own state of Florida, which has approximately $200 million invested, along with Broward County at $5 million, Miami-Dade at $76 million, and Palm Beach County at $700 million, who is currently known to be the largest bondholder in the world. Why do state and local governments purchase Israel bonds? The answer is practical. It's safe and a conservative investment. Investors value Israel's impeccable record of having never defaulted on payment of principal or interest. But from a philosophical standpoint, an investment in Israel bonds is in alignment of our pluralistic American democratic values with the only nation in the Middle East that shares this ethos. Friends, we live in a constant climate of misinformation and disinformation about the state of Israel. Our mantra cannot and should not be one of boycott and divestment, but rather engagement and investment with the only land whose national anthem is "The Hope."
Appreciate it. Matthew Levine, Mr. Levine here, followed by Jeffrey Berger, which is virtual, and then Donald Morgan. Good morning.
Hi, my name is Matthew Levine. I'm a Hillsborough County, unincorporated Hillsborough County resident. I'm here primarily today to speak as a Jew, to counter any of other Jewish people who are showing up here telling you you should invest in Israel. That's definitely not a Jewish value. Israel is currently committing a genocide. They're accused at the International Court of Justice by South Africa. New evidence was just introduced yesterday. Bezalel Smotrich, Israel's finance minister, has personally made many statements inciting genocide, so he's in that evidence. All of the credit agencies have downgraded Israel's credit rating because they are committing a genocide, and that makes it an extremely risky investment. If you're supposed to be carrying out a fiduciary duty to this county, you are definitely not doing it by considering investing in Israel bonds. It's just absolutely insane. I'm also wondering, what are these excess funds that we're talking about? I just heard that the county commission reduced funds for affordable housing from $10 million to $2 million. So it seems like, I don't know why you have any extra money to be investing in the first place. But if you are going to invest in stocks and bonds, it should be in things that will return, you know, make a reliable return on the investment, and that is definitely not Israel. As I've said, they've been downgraded by all three credit agencies. And, yeah, I'll just say that there are a lot of Jewish people who oppose what Israel is doing right now.
All right, thank you, sir. Jeffrey Berger, which is virtual, followed by Donald Morgan and Ellen Weiss. Is Mr. Berger on the line?
Yes. Nurse, my name is Jeffrey Berger, and I have the honor of serving as the president of the Tampa JCC Federation. I'm sorry that I could not be there to speak to you in person, but I appreciate the opportunity to address you by phone. I'm calling in to express my support for this ordinance amendment allowing county funds to be invested in Israel bonds. The Hillsborough County Commission has shown strong support for the state of Israel in the past, for which both I and our federation are most grateful, and the reasons you have done so are the same reasons why this ordinance amendment should be passed. Consider just a few of these factors. First, Israel is the only democratic country in the United States' most steadfast ally in the Middle East. Second, contrary to some of the misinformation spread on social media and elsewhere, Israel is a diverse and inclusive country. In addition to its Jewish population, Israel is home to millions, that's millions plural, of Christians, Muslims, Arabs, and people of other ethnic and religious backgrounds who serve in the Israeli military and government, in the judicial system, and in all areas of Israeli society. Third, Israel has entered into normalization agreements as it's formed economic connections with a number of Muslim countries in the Middle East. Fourth, there are strong connections between Israel and Florida generally, and Hillsborough County in particular. Among other things, the Florida-Israel Business Accelerator has helped Israeli-based companies connect with Floridians, which has resulted in job creation and other business development opportunities, both locally and across the state. And last but not least, the Israeli economy is strong and resilient and has attracted a considerable amount of investment from the world's largest companies. Now, if for whatever reason you don't want to consider those factors as you vote on this amendment, that I would urge you to instead consider this in light of Florida statute 218.415, which has amended last year a states that local governments' investment policies to be focused solely on pecuniary factors, that is, whether the investment is a good financial investment. You have heard and will continue to hear arguments against this amendment based on social or ideological perspectives. While I could absolutely provide compelling counterpoint arguments to each of these kinds-
Thank you, sir. The next three speakers are Donald Morgan, followed by Ellen Weiss, and Pamela Guerin. Good morning.
My name is Donald Morgan. I'm a retired managing director of JP Morgan Chase, and I'm looking at this proposed amendment in terms of, as I would if I stole Wall Street. Investing in Israel bonds is imprudent. It's based on old, now irrelevant, financial information state of Israel. On the Israel Bonds website, the only thing you're going to find is their 18K from 12/31/22. We know they proverbially will hit the fan in October. Their 2023 18K under SEC regs won't have to be issued until September 30th this year. So even when we get that, it only has three months' data on the Hamas war. So it is a totally inaccurate, outdated, and uneducated basis on which to make a financial investment in Israel bonds. The Bloomberg article on May the 9th states that Israel's 12-month trailing budget deficit was zero in May 2023. It's already up to 7% of GDP as of April 2024. Israel beginning the year thought the entire calendar year this year would only hit a trailing deficit of 6.6%. They've already hit 7% as of now. Also, I disagree that there will be no financial impact with this agenda item. Under Giasby, Section 2200, your annual comprehensive financial report has to be issued, and that would be subsumed by GARS, Governmental Accounting Research System, Chapter 6, Concerning Accounting and Reporting for Investments. And that is based on fair value methodology for anything greater than nine months' maturity, which these Israel bonds would be. And if there's any further downgrade in the Israel bonds, you would be required to write the principal down, mark the market, and that loss in principal would then occur, would be showing up in your non-operating revenue as a loss.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Ellen Weiss, followed by Pamela Guerin. Ellen, are you here? Okay, Ellen's not here. Pamela Guerin, followed by Mustafa Amara. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Pamela Guerin. I am a 40-plus-year resident of Hillsborough County, and I've raised my family here. And I'm here to thank you for your consideration of the item D-2 investment policy in Israel bonds, asking you to vote in favor. Israel stands as the United States' most unwavering ally in the tumultuous Middle East. This enduring partnership forged on democratic values and mutual interests has solidified over decades of cooperation. By investing in Israel bonds, Hillsborough County not only reinforces this alliance but contributes to the stability in the region and security. We share, as Americans, we share the democratic values of the state of Israel. It's the only democracy in the Middle East, and its common values, including commitment to freedom, equality, and the rule of law, are important. And by sharing, by supporting Israel through investment, Hillsborough County not only fosters these shared values but also strengthens the global democratic community. In Israel, individuals from all backgrounds contribute to the success of that nation, serving in various capacities, from government and defense forces to healthcare. And investing in Israel bonds not only supports a diverse and inclusive society but also promotes social cohesion and harmony. And finally, I'd like to point out that there have been diplomatic achievements of recent times that Israel's normalization agreements with Muslim-majority communities like Morocco, the United Arab Emirates, Bahrain, and Sudan signify a historic shift in regional dynamics. And these agreements not only enhance Israel's diplomatic standing, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Mustafa Amara, followed by Cameron Pressi.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of County Commissioners and fellow residents of Hillsborough County, my name is Mustafa Amara.
Continue, sorry.
I'd like to start by sharing some facts about the current affairs of Israel and the U.S. The U.S. and the U.N. have made it clear to Israel that an invasion into Rafah is a recipe to an even greater humanitarian crisis. This is our own government opposing Israel's military action, and yet they are proceeding. There are about 1.3 million Palestinians that are currently crammed into Rafah because they have nowhere else to go, trapped between the Israel military and Egypt's border walls. And Israel is still striking refugee camps across Rafah as we speak. And yet here we are, proposing to invest in Israeli bonds. Polls by Gallup as of the end of March show a huge shift in the U.S. population's perception of this conflict since November. Across party lines, we have shifted to opposing the Israeli military action in Gaza, to the extent that the majority of Americans now oppose it. I repeat that this is data from the end of March, and I'm sure we've all seen the massive uptick in protests and outcry across college campuses in the U.S. in the past several weeks. So we can expect that there's been a greater shift in public awareness and perception, suggesting that the number of Americans opposing Israel's military action is even greater now. And yet here we are proposing to invest in Israeli bonds. Commissioners, you have an obligation to represent your constituents. Whether Republican, Democrat, or Independent, your constituents have a clear consensus on the horrific brutality being inflicted indiscriminately upon the Palestinian population. Countries left and right are dropping their support for Israel in light of its actions, inevitably impacting its economy. And yet here we are proposing to invest in Israeli bonds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Cameron Pressi, followed by Nabeel Hamal. Hopefully I didn't say that wrong.
Thank you. My name is Cameron Pressi. I'm a Tampa resident, zip code 33614. I'm here today to speak in strong opposition to Agenda Item D-2 regarding the Hillsborough Investment Ordinance Amendment, allowing quote-unquote "surplus funds" to be invested in Israel bonds. This amendment should be rejected on practical, financial, legal, and moral grounds. These bonds would not be a financially sound investment. Israel bonds have been downgraded by financial rating agencies multiple times in the past few months alone. Regardless of your view on the Palestine-Israel conflict, we should all agree that investing county money in a war zone is a bad investment. The Board of County Commissioners routinely touts its fiscal responsibility, I understand that. Why then should Hillsborough tax dollars be invested in overseas government embroiled in a deadly conflict while the board slashes funding in our county? For example, millions were cut recently from the county's housing programs. On a legal note, these investments open up the county to potential legal trouble. Israel, including Israeli Finance Minister Bezalel Smotrich, are being investigated by the International Court of Justice. Those also add significant risk to any investments in Israel bonds. As more governments and legal entities condemn Israeli crimes, the chances that Israel cannot pay its debt grows. Hillsborough County Commission should be making investments in our residents rather than making politically motivated decisions. It is not the commission's job to prop up another government or to finance a war. In addition, dozens of folks have turned out to oppose this ordinance in February and again today. It's my understanding that hundreds more have sent emails to the board in opposition to the amendment. Hillsborough taxpayers do not want their money invested in faulty bonds that fund human rights abuses in Gaza and the West Bank. We want our money funding our own communities. Last hearing, a paid lobbyist was the sole voice advocating for the Israeli bonds ordinance, anticipating they'll be here again today in response to some comments that want to point out the false statements. During the February hearing, they lied through their teeth and they claimed there's not an apartheid system. The matter of the fact is Palestinians are subject to violence, an unequal legal system, incarceration without due process, and worse. We're asking you not to invest in this and invest in Hillsborough County instead. Thank you.
Nabeel Hamal, and I know I probably said that name wrong, I apologize, followed by Ada Mackey.
Hi, good morning. My name is Nabeel Hamoy. I'm a surgeon and a resident of Hillsborough County. Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim, in the name of God, the most beneficent and merciful. And all praise be to God, and may He send His salutations upon all the great prophets, including our Father, Prophet Abraham, Noah, Moses, Jesus, and the final messenger, Prophet Muhammad. Muhammad. As to what follows, this is appalling, you know? I'm glad to have the opportunity to engage civically, but I, you know, I had to leave my clinic today so I could come speak out against the most insane policy I've ever seen on the board. You should all be ashamed. As to the Israeli bonds, which actually should be called the occupied Palestinian bonds, are going to support the Israeli occupation forces, they are not defense forces, they are Israeli genocidal forces committing this crime, we should not be a part of that. As to the person who spoke earlier and said, "We're not the first mover," that, so what? We're not the first mover? We don't want to be a first mover, we don't want to be a second mover in committing and supporting genocide. This is embarrassing. As to what many of the people said before, we have so many other pressing projects that we should be funding those projects. This is something that we should be supporting our own community. And as to those of you wearing Israeli-American pins, your loyalty lies to this country. We pledged allegiance at the beginning of this meeting to, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, not to Israel. It's embarrassing that you would want to support this. You are traitors if you wear those pins, and you are traitors if you support this bond. You should be embarrassed. You should be embarrassed, and you will stand before God for this. And so I urge you to have a conscience. As you prayed, County Commissioner Donna, you prayed that God would shower mercy upon us. I agree with that, and I hope that he guides you all to the right decision, because the right decision is voting against this bond. Thank you very much.
Ada Mackic, followed by Shahad Alis Salih. Either of them two here?
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Ada Mackic. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right, good morning. My name is Ada Mackic. I'm calling today gravely alarmed by this body is even entertaining the abhorrent idea of investing our county funds into the Israel bonds. To do so would be to openly finance the genocide that's being perpetrated against the Palestinian people of Gaza. Let me be clear, the International Court of Justice has ruled there is plausible evidence that Israel is committing atrocious acts of genocide, throughout indiscriminate killings of civilians, forced displacement of families from their homes, and explicit aim of ethnically cleansing the Palestinian population. Investing in Israel bonds directly implicates the Hillsborough County as being complicit in these crimes against humanity. And now, from a financial perspective, aligning ourselves with a racist apartheid regime presents an unconscionable burgeoning risk that should be untouchable for any responsible judiciary. Israel's economy is being strangled by burgeoning sanctions, divestment campaigns, and global condemnation over its egregious human rights violations. Its runaway military spending has already prompted multiple credit downgrades, as my comrades have stated earlier. It reflects the extreme financial jeopardy awaiting any institution reckless enough to purchase its bonds. And also, we must ask ourselves, what moral and ethical depravity would compel this commission to pursue profits by bankrolling violent oppression, land theft, and state-sanctioned murder? Our constituents elected you to uplift Hillsborough County, not abate the genocide. Investing taxpayer money into an outright perpetrator of war crimes, ethnic purging, is a despicable perversion of our duties. As representatives meant to serve all of our residents equitably, it's reprehensible to even consider funneling out for public funds.
Thank you. Shahad Alis Salih, followed by Ashraf Nubani. Either of them here? Nope. Samira Obed. Go ahead, come on forward. Oh, okay, you're next. Go ahead. Please state your name.
Thank you, and I'm visually impaired, so I just may ask for...
Yes, sir, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. My name is Ashraf Nubani. I live in Val Rico. Ostensibly, this D2 is to expand the country's, the county's foreign investment option, but it seems the underlying incentive is to show support for Israel in this very difficult time for that nation. As an American of Palestinian descent, the issue is very important to me. Let me lay out three reasons why this proposal is not in the interest of Hillsborough County or its residents. Number one, politically, it shows weakness. The message is one of desperation. Despite the decades of unconditional support that many Americans have extended for Israel, its reputation as a strategic ally is in tatters. In addition, it is pitting many of us against the younger generations. Instead of demonizing them for their principled stand on college campuses against the human slaughter in Gaza, we should be reaching out to them with thoughtful guidance, focused compassion, and a duty of fiscal responsibility for which they are owed. Two, economically, it is a bad investment. We're thinking with our hearts when we should be thinking with our heads. We are experiencing buyer's remorse. Despite the untold billions of dollars we have invested in propping up the viability and security of the state of Israel, October 7th has shown Israel to be a paper tiger. And as its biggest financial backer, our vulnerabilities as a nation have been exposed here at home and abroad. This proposal to amend the ordinance paving the way to investing in Israeli bonds is throwing good money after bad, and I caution the board against this. Three, religiously, it is immoral. I could fathom faith-based sentiment for the state of Israel if it had been established along the biblical examples of King David and Solomon.
Thank you, sir.
It didn't go beyond two minutes. Where prostitution, homosexuality, usury, and not to mention the seven deadly sins, would have been prohibited and shunned.
Next three speakers, Samira Obed, Rami Osman, and then a Jack Ross. All right, just give them to the clerk. No, sir, your time's done. Sir, your time's done. Thank you, sir. Is there Samira here? Okay, Rami Osman. Rami here? No. Jack Ross? No, Jack Ross? All right. Amanda? Yes, I did. Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Rami Osman, here to talk about the D2, allowing investment in Israel, as if it's part of some obscene loyalty test to a psychotic government that is accused of genocide and mass murder. Two months ago, the American Secretary of Defense, Lloyd Austin, testified in a congressional hearing and stated that Israel killed over 25,000 women and children in Gaza since October. And since then, that was two months ago, the number has just gone up. The U.S. government doesn't dispute those numbers. The U.N. and international bodies do not dispute those numbers. And we're talking about, from that 25,000, about 14,000 or 15,000 children that were killed, in their homes, in their refugee camps, in their hospitals, and in their schools. And so I want to focus a little bit on the schools here. Hillsborough County has about 250 to 300 schools. Not only to be graphic, but we're talking about investing in a government that is involved in mass murder. And if we were to distribute that 14,000 or 15,000 dead children among the schools of Hillsborough County, it would be about 50 dead children per school. And you're talking about investing in a government that is doing this type of action. About two classrooms massacred in every Hillsborough County school. Is this what you really want to invest in? And so you understand that I'm not exaggerating here. Gaza, the size of Gaza, doesn't even compare to the size of Hillsborough County. Gaza being 150 square miles or 140 square miles, Hillsborough County is...
Thank you, sir.
1,200 square miles.
Thank you, sir. We have Jack Ross, Mr. Ross here. The next two are virtual, Amanda Tuatti and Leonard Marks. Is Amanda online?
Amanda has not checked in.
How about Leonard Marks?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. Hello?
Good morning. Please proceed, Mr. Marks.
Good morning. My name is Leonard Marks. Yes, good morning. My name is Leonard Marks. I am a 40-year resident of Hillsborough County and more than 20-year investor in Israel bonds. We invest in Israel bonds because we believe they're a sound, secure investment, and they offer good returns. And also because it's an investment in democracy, investment in an alliance that is becoming more and more important in this dangerous world. You've heard from many of those who speak in opposition, and those who speak in opposition relate and repeat and repeat and repeat the false charges of apartheid, genocide, colonialism, occupation. None of these are true, and they have only one of a singular purpose, and that is to promote BDS, boycott, divestment, and sanction, to destroy and affect the state of Israel, to harm the state of Israel. BDS has been widely recognized as anti-Semitic. Thirty-seven states, including the state of Florida, have adopted anti-BDS laws. Congress, both the House and Senate, have overwhelmingly adopted resolutions condemning BDS. BDS is precisely what the opponents of this action you are considering today are encouraging. I ask you that you reject this and take the opportunity to reject this anti-Semitism and adopt the resolution, which, as I understand it, just gives the county the opportunity to consider, with all factors to consider, including their fiduciary obligation, would Israel bonds be an investment that would be prudent and worthwhile for the county? And I think they should have that opportunity. As time goes on, they could have that opportunity to make that investment. Thank you for the time, too, the opportunity to speak.
Mark Siegel, Siegel present, and then followed by Alama Alhassan, virtual, and then Muhammed Adeh in person. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Mark Siegel. I am a Tampa resident and native and resident of Hillsborough County as well, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you or before you this morning. So I just want to take this opportunity to lay out a few facts. Israel stands as the United States' most steadfast ally in the Middle East and the only place in the Middle East that allows democratic principles with all people living together in relative harmony, a bastion of freedom and a region that stifles free speech, freedom of expression, and freedom of religion. Since October 7th, more than $2.7 billion in Israel bonds have been sold to institutional, governmental, and retail-level investments, demonstrating confidence of other cities, counties, and states in the state of Israel, and its ability to survive and thrive amidst a multi-front war launched by terrorist organizations insistent on its destruction. Since the first bond was sold in 1951, the state of Israel has never defaulted. Unfortunately, the divestment movement has gained momentum in recent months, ignores and has forgotten the fact that a ceasefire existed on October 6th, and that Israel, for years, has lived under the constant threat of destruction and has had to spend huge amounts of money on defensive rockets such as Iron Dome. By way of example, the Wall Street Journal reported that the estimated cost of Israel intercepting the hundreds of drones and missiles fired by Iran several weeks ago exceeded $550 million. While these costs are necessary, it detracts from what Israel excels at, which is economic growth, industry advancement, and advancements in medicine, amongst others. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We got Alama Alhassan, virtual, followed by Muhammed Adfeh in person, and Gary Gold. Is there a llama on the phone?
Yep. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
I'm going to assume that, yes. Okay, my name is Lama Alhassan. I live in South Tampa. I've had to listen off to a lot of racial vitriol from the board and public speakers today. I do want to point out that Israel is the one who's responsible for the quote-unquote tumultuous conditions that exist today. I am not surprised that the board has the audacity to make a Palestinian like myself join this call while I have to work on NEXA. May 15, 1948, is Nekba, known as the catastrophe in Bush that marks 76 years of Israel's oppression against Palestinians. Seventy-six years of murder, rape, displacement, demolished homes, and genocide. These are not made-up accusations. These are extremely well documented, and the trauma of my people that they have endured and continue to endure is one that you will never understand. I am not here to play with your heartstrings because I don't think that means anything to you. As a Hillsborough County resident, you should vote no for changing this ordinance because it is not good for the people of Hillsborough. Money should stay here to take care of our people. It should not be spent to back a terrible investment. And that is what Israel is. It is a terrible investment. We know this is why you want to change this ordinance. We're not going to believe that, oh, this just gives you an opportunity to do it, and it doesn't necessarily mean that you will, because we know that is what you want to do. Spending our money on Israel bonds is not only morally repugnant and financially unsound, it's also illegal. Owen and Russell claim to care about the rules. How about the Florida statute that prohibits the purchase of investments for social, religious, and ideological purposes? This rule change proposal would allow for the purchase of bonds to materially support Israel for what members have explicitly stated for supporting Israel. And considering how financially unsound it is, what is the reason for backing this if not ideological? Do not move forward with this ordinance today.
All right, thank you. Got Muhammed Adfeh, followed by Gary Gold, and then a Jonathan Ellis. Good morning.
My name is Muhammed Adfeh. I'm an attorney and Hillsborough County resident, and I'm here to oppose D2. As a threshold matter, it's laughable that some of you elected officials see fit to talk about conflicts of interest while wearing the flag of a foreign nation and brazenly and shamelessly using county money to peddle your ideological commitments. Financially speaking, this amendment laughably and insultingly singles out for investment and economy in severe decline. Perhaps next, the commission can invest whatever is left of our money in FTX crypto. Legally speaking, this amendment exposes the county to multiple waves of costly and embarrassing litigation. Michael Owen is an attorney and knows this, but clearly doesn't care. Again, his commitment is to Israel. At all costs, and indeed at our costs, this is to say nothing of the cost to millions of innocent Palestinians who some committee members seem to have contempt for. Investing public funds based on ideological commitments is strictly prohibited under Florida law, and should this amendment pass, it will result in imminent litigation against the county. In other words, an investment that promises costs instead of returns. It is undeniable that regardless of your ideological beliefs, this amendment has no economic or legal merit. All of you wax on endlessly in your campaigns about the will of the people, and most of you pay lip service to the importance of investing here at home. Yet in February, only Ms. Kemp had the basic decency and good sense to honor her constituents' wishes and to responsibly steward our money. Thank you sincerely in advance to those who oppose this amendment today. Your stance here is a credit to your commitment to the community. As for the rest of you who have seen fit to prostitute yourself for Israeli interests, you are not fit for decent society, let alone political office. You are an embarrassment to the county. I sincerely wish upon you what you clearly wish upon the Palestinians.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Jonathan Ellis, followed by Muhammed Mubarak, and then a Russ Miller.
This is Gary Gold. I am the CEO of the Tampa Jewish Committee Centers and Federation, and also the co-chair of the Florida Israel Business Accelerator. I want to thank you very much for...
Mr. Gold? Did we lose you?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi. This is Gary Gold. I'm not sure how much you've heard of me. I'm the CEO of the Tampa JCCs and Federation and co-chair of the Florida Israel Business Accelerator. I don't want to repeat what other people have said, so I'll just focus on a few things. Israel has played lead roles or sole roles in the USB, flash drive, cell phones, drip irrigation, the rideshare platform ways, and dozens of other lifesaving and other inventions. It is a world leader in innovation, and I am a long-term investor in Israel bonds. I know from my own experience that it is a solid investment. I'm not qualified to make that statement, except for my own personal experience. And I urge you to consider boarding positively to allow for the potential, after you do your due diligence, in investing in Israel bonds. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Yes, sir.
Yes, I think I'm next. My name is Jonathan Ellis. It's a pleasure to be here before you again. I know a number of you, and I want to thank you for the consideration of this amendment. I'd like to point out a couple of things. I think sometimes it gets lost. This is not necessarily today the day to invest in Israel bonds. It's the day today is to allow you to consider investing in Israel bonds. Number two, if you were to invest... Number two, if you were to invest in Israel bonds, you wouldn't be the only county, as indicated before, you wouldn't be the... You'd be following in the states, in the steps of the state of Florida, in a number of other states, in a number of other counties, that each time, each year, receives interest from the state of Israel, and that interest can be used to fulfill the very programs that you're considering today. It's not money going from a program, it's money you're investing anyways, and it's providing you additional options to consider. And on that point, I want to say thank you, and I think you do want to consider these other options. The only other thing I'd like to point out, which I wasn't going to comment, but I will. There is a level of hate within this community toward the state of Israel, to those that support it, to those that potentially support the Jewish community. That has no place in Hillsborough County. This commission has been strong on that statement, and I commend you for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Muhammed Mubarak, then Russ Miller, and then Mansour Mustafa, which is virtual. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Muhammed Mubarak. I'm a local attorney and a former prosecutor. As an American, I believe in putting America first. As a former prosecutor, I was sworn, I had a duty, like you do, to put Hillsborough County first, to put the people of the state of Florida first, and I can proudly say that I did that. And I remind you of your duty to do what's in the best interest of the Hillsborough County residents, not what's in the best interest of Israel. I remind you of that, your solemn duty and responsibility as you sit here today promoting this political stunt for your own political aspirations and motivations for your own political careers. I remind you to do what's in the best interest of the people who have voiced their concerns today with this proposed amendment. So first, let's consider the principle of diversification. It's a fundamental strategy in investment. When you're investing in Israeli bonds, you're limiting your investment scope and exposing the county and the county's financial health to geopolitical risks associated with the region of high tension for obvious reasons, which is the genocidal apartheid state of Israel. It's imperative that our investment portfolio spreads its risk across a broad array of assets not concentrated in the securities of any single foreign government, some of you which are wearing that flag here today, a foreign government. And while we're at it, investing in foreign governments, why don't we look at China? Why don't we look into Iran? Why limit it to Israel? Let's invest the county's money in all these other foreign countries. Second, there are ethical considerations that must not be overlooked. Investing in bonds from any foreign government, including Israel, can be seen as a political statement. In fact, it's more than a political statement. It's alienating your constituents who have differing views on complex international issues. Our focus should remain neutral, prioritizing financial returns over political expressions, which is what you're doing today, to serve the benefits of Hillsborough County residents. Furthermore, the expected returns on Israeli bonds might not be competitive. Thank you.
Russ Miller, Russ Miller, followed by Mansour Mustafa, virtual, Nita Azam, virtual, and Aisha Khan, virtual. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. I am Russ Miller, a resident of County Commission District 2. This is where my friend Patricia Alonso also lives. She has family living in Lebanon now. Israel drops 2,000-pound bombs on homes, hospitals, and churches, massacring entire families. We have cut Israel off from our 2,000-pound bombs. We should cut them off from Hillsborough County's financing, too. Israel has assassinated nearly 100 reporters in Gaza and refused admission to brave reporters trying to pick up where their fallen colleagues have left off. This is so the world, and even Israelis themselves, will be in the dark about the suffering and cruelty its military inflicts. This is so the disinformation Israeli spokespeople spread cannot be challenged with vivid imagery, especially imagery of appalling human suffering, which might pressure Israel to pursue a just peace. We all remember the influence such imagery had on our decision to finally stop bombing the Vietnamese and countering the lies of the Lyndon Johnson and Richard Nixon administrations. We should not be complicit with this Holocaust in any way or supporting a state that discriminates against people based on their religion or their lack of religion. This eight-decades-long war is just a continuation of the Crusades in the Middle Ages, over which superstitious fanatics get to control the land they say God gave to them. We don't invest in Russia while it's slaughtering Ukrainians. We don't invest in Sudan while state-supported fanatics commit genocide there. We should withdraw all our support from a state that has lost its way. We should not be complicit in facilitating the Armageddon some American superstitious fanatics hope for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a Mansour Mustafa, virtual?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Great. My name is Mansour Mustafa. I'm a Hillsborough County resident, and I'm... Can I go ahead?
Yes.
My name is Mansour Mustafa. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County. I also am the VP of Finance for a Tampa-based nonprofit. Among my duties is to manage the investment strategy for surplus funds in my organization, so my comments come from a place of experience. My professional opinion is that Hillsborough County should not be investing in assets that have had their ratings downgraded over the course of recent reporting periods. Israel's bonds fall into this category. They've been downgraded by the S&amp;P Global Organization, which stated on April 18th that the outlook on Israel's long-term rating is negative, so those ratings are going to decline further. U.S. Treasury bills offer similar or better rates with a much higher rating. The county and commissioners have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents, and there's no justification to invest in downgraded overseas bonds when there are literally thousands of higher-rated options here in Florida and the U.S. Investing in Israel bonds opens the commission up to potential lawsuits for mismanagement of county funds. If one investment is chosen over clear and safer alternatives, this commission puts itself in danger. My question is this: Why would the county also want to be affiliated with any investment related to death, misery, war? This meeting was opened by thanking the Creator for the peace He's provided our country and our county. Let's not risk that by sending our investment funds to perpetuate a war in any other country. By a 3-1 margin, county residents have said it today again and again. You commissioners should vote against the proposed changes to the investment policy. Thank you for giving me enough time to speak.
All right, thank you. Sir, Nita Azam, virtual?
Hi, everyone. My name is Nita Azam. I'm a member of Hillsborough County, and I speak as a young person, I speak as a healthcare professional. At a time when the youth of our country are putting their careers and livelihoods on the line to challenge academic institutions to divest from Israel, we as a county want to invest $25 million into Israel? The irony of this, I must say, is not lost on me. And just politics aside, investment decisions should not be based on finance... They should be based, actually, on financial soundness, right? Investing in Israeli bonds would be an irresponsible financial move and a bad investment risk overall. Financial ratings, like many of us have talked about, have downgraded these Israeli bonds multiple times in recent months. Investing in a country that is currently at war is risky. I don't care if it's been okay in the past. They are in a current war right now, which they are bombarding these people, and they're asking for all this money from the United States. And we have found proof of Israel's skyrocketing budget deficit from its military operations in Gaza. We cannot ignore this. This is not just like previously as it's been. I also want to mention that Israel has been found to be plausibly committing genocide by the ICJ, which is no small label. We should not overlook this. And we as a county, regardless of our religion, our race, race, our ethnicity, what nothing to do with an entity that is involved in possibly committing a genocide. We do not want that association. It is morally wrong for our funds for being in support of Israel's genocide, and that's exactly what they would be doing if we send money and invest money into their bonds. So we don't want any kind of complicity with this action. And I implore the commissioners to focus on policy and investments that benefit Hillsborough County. We are residents here. We have a crisis when it comes to housing, homelessness, healthcare, education. America needs to come first. We are American first. We are not the United States of Iraq, right? It is not the commissioner's job to help another country prop up their economy, nor is it their job to help another country fund its war. It also sets this precedent that we should support other foreign countries with investment.
Is there Aisha Khan, that's virtual? Aisha on the line?
Yeah. Hi, thank you so much for having me. Yes, my name is Aisha Khan. I'm a Hillsborough County resident. I live in Luke, Florida. I am here to speak on these two in opposition of it. Like many others before me have voiced concerns about investing in Israeli bonds. Definitely, you want to echo the same sentiment, that I think it will be a bad financial move, financially irresponsible to invest in a country that's in a current war. You know, they have a skyrocketing budget deficit from its military operations in Gaza. Numerous organizations, financial organizations at the S&amp;P have downgraded Israeli bonds recently. Why would we want to invest in a country whose, you know, bonds are being downgraded? It makes no financial sense. Besides that, you know, many other... A list of countries sanctioning or boycotting Israel is growing daily due to, you know, their opposition against what Israel is doing in Gaza, which then includes a further risk to investing in these bonds. So it would make it difficult for Israel to pay its debts. I don't think it's a good move at all. Funds that indirectly support Israel's genocide of Palestinians, we don't want to be associated with that. Hillsborough County has plenty of its own problems, like others have voiced. I'm a physician. I see... I work for a nonprofit. I see individuals on a daily basis who are homeless, who have, you know, no transportation issues, education issues, so many problems, so many issues that we can be certainly investing our money in instead of investing in a foreign country to commit, you know, crimes that they are committing. Don't use our taxpayer's dollars for ideologically or politically motivated purposes. Please help our own counties first and vote no on this amendment change to invest in Israel. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Alessandra Wur, virtual, followed by Jarrett Nelson, and Alina Attik. Alessandra on the line?
Hi there. Hi, I'm Alessandra Wur. I'm here to ask that you vote no on the amendment and consider the reasons it's been brought forth in the first place. Changing Hillsborough County's investment policy to include specific support for Israel during a time in which the country is expanding, is expending massive amounts on perpetuating a humanitarian crisis, and has a... Is it insulting and concerning proposal, a clear political pivot that ignores the needs of your constituents? As representatives of the county, it is your responsibility to invest taxpayer dollars responsibly and to represent your constituents' best interests. Yet Israel bonds have been downgraded by financial ratings agencies. You've had many people speaking today to give their professional opinions as to why this is not a great policy decision, not a great financial decision, and investing in a country that is perpetuating a genocide, those risks grow daily. Israel is currently in a budget deficit due to its military operations, and this is made worse by the many boycotts and sanctions against Israel for their heinous war crimes, which means that they're receiving even less to pay off their debts. Why should we be the ones to take that on? The people have expressed their needs to you, yet you continue to press for money over lives and over your own county. It's insulting that you would waste people's time to draw attention to changing an ordinance to make a political investment in this one particular country, reaching far outside your jurisdiction in favor of making a statement about values, while your constituents are begging for funding that will invest in your future here. Thank you.
Thank you. Jarrett Nelson, followed by Alina Attik, Jonathan Chavez. Good morning.
My name is Jarrett Nelson, and I'm here today to oppose agenda item D2 and the proposed revisions to Hillsborough County investment policy to allow for the investment of surplus funds in investments backed by the government of Israel. The proposed revisions allow up to $25 million in investments in Israeli bonds per issue and would make Israel the only foreign nation investments allowed under the investment policy. Our domestic financial markets offer a wide variety of financial products that currently meet the county, the needs of the county. There is no financial need to expand county investment options beyond our shores, and Hillsborough County residents would prefer to see the investments reside in proven reserves like the Florida Local Government Surplus Fund. Florida's Chief Financial Officer Jimmy Petronas has already expanded the state's investment in Israeli bonds to over $250 million. The proposed investment of surplus county funds in Israeli bonds would overexpose surplus taxpayer funds to the credit risk of a single foreign nation. I understand the urge to support a country who was attacked. However, investments in countries at war are not a wise use of surplus county funds. In February, Moody's downgraded Israeli bonds from A1 to A2 after the Israeli economy shrunk by one-fifth. While Israeli bonds are still low investment grade, they are far from the diversified double or triple-A grade products Hillsborough County taxpayers expect their surplus funds to be invested in. I urge the commissioners to consider the primary investment objectives of the surplus fund when voting on today's agenda item. Recently, we've seen immense pushback against any consideration of non-financial factors in decisions to buy or sell security or private asset. Environmental, social, and governments, or ESG investing, has been derided as woke, ineffective way to push radical ideological agendas. The proposed revisions to the Hillsborough County investment policy that allow the purchase of Israeli bonds is a clear example of the influence of non-financial factors in county investment decisions. Any county investments in Israeli, in Israel would be directly supporting the radical agenda of Benjamin Netanyahu.
Alina Attik, followed by Jonathan Chavez, and then Yawar Nancy, virtual. Good morning.
Hi, my... Okay. Hi, my name is Alina, and I'm a USF student. For months now, USF students have been advocating for divestment from weapons manufacturers in light of the conflict in the Middle East, and we were told by USF administration that they could not legally divest due to statutes passed last summer that prohibited them from making investment decisions based on ideology. So imagine my surprise when I find out that our county commissioners are even considering investing in Israel based on ideological support for the country. I notice there are no Middle Easterners on this board, otherwise I assume people's names would have been pronounced correctly, and there are no Middle Easterners giving comments in support of this. May I suggest to the politicians of today the apparently far-fetched idea of investing in your own nation and keeping your hands out of the Middle East? Hillsborough County has no business in the Middle East. America has no business in the Middle East, especially after the War on Terror took 4 million lives. All America's involvement in the Middle East leads to is atrocities. This is not the United States of Israel, and you are not the world police. I think at this point, we should learn our lesson and focus on our own faults instead of dabbling in other countries' affairs. I also want to reiterate, after hearing how many people genuinely believe that Israel is the only democracy in the Middle East, that those here in support of this are primarily old white people who do not seem like they've ever set foot outside the United States in their lives, much less in the Middle East, while those who are actually from the Middle East are the ones in opposition. So do take that into account. So take it from us. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attik. Jonathan Chavez, followed by Yawar Nancy, the virtual, and then Megan Amir. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Chavez. I'm a five-year resident of Hillsborough County. I am firmly opposed to the proposal to allow investment in risky Israel bonds. The timing of Commissioner Owen's proposal demonstrates a remarkable lack of engagement with the needs of his own constituents and the county as a whole. Tampa has one of the highest average rental costs of anywhere in the country. Our public transportation is frequently ranked among the worst in the nation, while some of our roads and intersections are among the most dangerous. Hillsborough has more struggling middle and elementary schools than any other school district in Florida. I wonder how parents at Bernie, Jackson, or Ruskin Elementarys, DNF schools, and Commissioner Owen's own district would feel about their county commission voting to prioritize funding to support a foreign nation's heavily polarizing war over supporting the success of their own school districts at home. There are real tangible problems in Hillsborough County. Instead of solving them, this proposal is a poorly timed, financially dubious effort to try and send our county tax dollars abroad instead of using them to pay our teachers, pave our potholes, or protect our environment. Solving those problems would take real attention and real funding, but this ordinance affords residents of Hillsborough County neither. When it was time to fund affordable housing, this commission was worried about the county budget. You voted to slash funding dramatically, saying that there was no room to spare funds to put roofs over people's heads. When it came time to renew CIT funding for a school, you felt the purse was so light that we could only afford a fifth of what we have historically given. And yet, when it comes time to invest our tax dollars in war, evidently Commissioner Owen thinks that we've got money to spare. Performative posturing proposals such as this ordinance are why I am glad to be running to challenge Commissioner Owen for his seat this November. Thank you.
All right, is there Yawar Nancy, virtual?
A Yawar has not checked in.
Okay. Megan Amir, is Megan here? Followed by Amanda Leopard Gomes, virtual, and Samuel Ronan. Is Amanda on the line?
Hi, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, good morning, county commissioners. As a Hillsborough County resident and National Science Foundation graduate research fellow at USF and a community organizer, I come before you today to express my dissent and demand you do not move forward with the agenda item D2's investment policy. Changing the policy to allow for county funds to be invested in Israel bonds but not for any other government is clearly politically and ideologically motivated, financially irresponsible, and simply a bad investment risk at this time. Financial rating agencies have downgraded Israel bonds multiple times in recent months, and investing in a country at war is risky. Israel has a skyrocketing budget deficit from its military operations in Gaza, and the excessive spending has put a lot of pressure on Israel's currency. The fact that Israel has been found to be plausibly committing genocide adds to the risk. The list of countries, organizations, and other entities sanctioning and/or boycotting Israel because of its violations of international law grows daily. This will make it increasingly difficult for Israel to pay its debt. Additional rulings from the ICJ could lead to future Israeli government assets, and Israel bond issuance is connected to Israel Finance Minister Gazelle Smutrick, who has been cited for the ICJ for genocidal statements, even further adding to the risk of this investment. As such, we must consider the potential legal ramifications and litigation costs for the county if they invest in Israel bonds after the International Court of Justice ruling of plausible genocide. Our home near facing multiple crises that are actually the job of this board to address. Investments made with our county funds should directly support the growth and development in Hillsborough County, Florida, and/or the United States, not foreign governments regardless of our diplomatic history. Moving forward in this decision is fiscally irresponsible, and we directly harm our ability to support Hillsborough County residents. We, we, the people, are clear in our position. We do not support our tax dollars we utilize to support the maintenance of the apartheid state, ethnic cleansing, and genocide of Palestinians. These are not subjective statements written in anti-semitism, but based on the application of the
Is there Samuel Ronan that's virtual?
Samuel and Kalista are not on the line.
Okay, how about Azil?
Yes, um, yes, Azil Hamdi. Good morning. My name is Azil Hamdi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I'd like to start off by saying something that I'm sure all rational-minded people can agree with. Investment decisions should be based on whether or not there is financial benefit, rather than being based off of emotional ties, politics, or ideology. Investing in Israel would be financially irresponsible and a bad investment risk for several reasons. First, because financial ratings agencies have downgraded Israel bonds multiple times in recent months. We also have to consider the fact that investing in a country at war is risky. Israel has a skyrocketing budget deficit from its military operations in Gaza, and the excessive spending has put a lot of pressure on Israel's currency. On a similar note, the list of countries, organizations, and other entities sanctioning and/or boycotting Israel because of violations of international law is growing daily, which would make it difficult for Israel to pay debt. There are also potential legal ramifications for the county to invest in Israel after the International Court of Justice's ruling of plausible genocide, because the funds will likely support Israel's war crimes against the Palestinians, which would make Hillsborough County complicit in said war crimes. Besides these risks and legal ramifications, it's important to keep in mind that everyone here was elected to represent Hillsborough County residents, not the residents of any other country. Therefore, investments should be creating jobs here in Hillsborough County, Florida, or the United States, not another country. Investments should also support growth and development in Hillsborough County, Florida, or the United States, not any other country. We have enough issues here at home, and as American citizens, like the housing crisis that so many Hillsborough County residents are justifiably concerned about, we should be concerned with resolving those issues with our funds, which we cannot bear. I want to end with this. During the public comment on February 21st, when the Israel bond issue was on the agenda, many people spoke out against investing in Israel bonds, and you've received emails from a wide variety of Hillsborough County residents against this, due to the fact that your constituents, we as your constituents, who you are meant to represent and whose tax dollars you are using, are struggling with so many issues that you're putting on the sidelines to support a foreign country, when our loyalty, commitment, and support should lie to United States citizens only and what will benefit them. Given all the reasons mentioned, it would be highly unwise and irresponsible for the county commissioners.
Is Lena Vu here present?
Okay, thank you for
Followed by Samir Burnside virtual, and then Jameer Edwards in person.
Hi, my name is Lena Vu, and I am here to oppose item D2. For the past seven months, the Zionist occupation forces have been indiscriminately dropping bombs all across Gaza and have targeted anyone and everyone, from children to parents and doctors to aid workers. And these are just some of the human rights violations and war crimes that have been committed by the Zionist entity, but the list is long and growing by the day. The funds garnered through investments that you're pushing for would support the apartheid state of Israel and its genocide of Palestinians and make Hillsborough County complicit in its war crimes. Surplus funds should not be going towards a foreign entity that already receives billions from our federal government. Those funds should be supporting this community. There are people here who are living paycheck to paycheck and a major teacher shortage because they don't receive a living wage. Additionally, it is financially irresponsible to consider investing in Israeli bonds since its economy has been tanking since they began this genocide. This year, we saw the first-ever downgrade in, in bond credit rating for Israel, with Moody's cutting the rating from A1 to A2, five notches above investment grade, and kept its credit outlook at negative, meaning a further downgrade is possible. Last month, SMP ratings also lowered Israel's credit rating and stated it could continue lowering it if the escalation in Gaza expands to other fronts, which it has been since Israel has also been bombing the daylights out of Lebanon and Syria and are committing war crimes there too, unsurprisingly. I urge you to do your job and represent the interests of this community and maintain transparency and fairness in your decisions, especially regarding taxpayer funds, and especially if those funds could be going towards a terrorist state that is committing genocide. Thank you.
All right, we've got Samir Burnside virtual, followed by Jameer Edwards in person, and then Ella Thompson virtual. Is Samir on the line?
Good morning, esteemed members of the Board of County Commissioners. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, uh, my name is Samira Burnside. I am a Hillsborough County resident, and I'm speaking today to ask you to vote down on item D2. Uh, we're living through one of the toughest economic times that many young voters have ever lived through, between the simple cost of living here to the drain of gas for many people. It has never been harder than it is now to live in Hillsborough County, let alone anywhere else in the state. This has caused this board to make careful and considered choices about where and how you spend your resources, deciding if millage increases because it would be too taxing for the people of this county. So you're clearly cognizant of the issues that play here, of our underfunded schools, of the need for more fire stations, of the rampant homelessness in our cities, and the struggles that the everyday citizen here in Hillsborough faces due to these tough economic times. So with that in mind, shouldn't we be investing inward? No matter what you think about the genocide in Palestine being carried out by the apartheid government of Israel, we can all agree that spending the surplus money that could be invested in the schools or low-cost housing or community necessities on foreign nations' wars is not what we should be doing right now. Israel is already being given billions by our federal government, and from an investment perspective, this is a risky, risky investment, and the money gambling is money that could help everyone who lives here exponentially. I ask that you please vote down on item number D2 and turn your focus inward, the community you're serving, instead of the violent wars of foreign nations. Thank you for your time.
We've got Jameer Edwards, followed by Ella Thompson virtual, and then Aisha Aziza in person. Good morning.
Good morning to all in attendance. My name is Jameer Edwards, resident of Hillsborough County and a representative on behalf of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. A man formerly our nation's most decorated war veteran at the time of his death, a man forgotten by time once said, "War is a racket." Over half of our country is drowning in medical debt, is living paycheck to paycheck, barely able to scrape by. A lack of critical education has led to 54% of adults not being able to read past the sixth-grade level. Our road to litter with potholes in the homeless crowded streets. I saw them as I came here today. These ailments reach far and wide, including right here in our county. Despite all these empirical facts, our leaders at the very top, including the president, have decided that instead of building up our failing infrastructure, investing productivity here, sending our hard-earned taxpayer dollars to fund a proxy war in Ukraine and a genocide in Gaza conducted by Israel is a better usage of their time. Billions of our taxpayer dollars have gone to fund these wars, with most recently a $95 billion bill being agreed upon by the House, and also as of yesterday, another billing in weapons. At no point in time in recent years, and especially in the recent months of October 7th, have the American people had a say in where their money goes. Money they have rightfully earned, which through studies and surveys conducted, they would rather be invested here in their home country, is being sent to fund a genocide in which none of us gain from. These audacious acts have reached close to home with our commissioners, including Michael Owen, asking if the county can invest in Israeli bonds and how they can change the county's investment policy. I cite Jacob Reyes of the Acxiom Tampa Bay. The policy change, of course, not automatically mean they're required to do so. They just have the new ability to, but common sense allows us to realize that there is obviously one course we are headed on, and that is that he is spearheading, which ultimately war profiteer through investing in an entity that is conducting a genocide. Apparently, said commissioner made clear in December that his motivation for backing the policy change was tied, was tied to current events, citing what he described, quote, "critical moment in our history." This statement is as vague as it gets, similar to other politicians' empty rhetoric. The commissioner is a grown adult.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. We've got Ella Thompson virtual, followed by Aisha Azuza in person, and then Asif Kunwar virtual.
Ella is not on the line.
Ella's not, okay. Is Aisha here?
Ella is not on.
All right, thank you. Good morning.
Hi, um, hello, I'm Aisha Aziza. Um, I stand before you today to urge you to vote against including Israel bonds in our county's investment policy. Since I am still unsure why the infinite moral implications of this investment are not enough reason to end the conversation, I'll speak on this. Our investment decisions should be guided by financial soundness, not politics or ideology. Don't worry, I won't bore you on humanitarian concerns. I know that stuff doesn't matter here. Firstly, investing in Israel bonds would be financially irresponsible with taxpayer dollars. Recent downgrades by financial ratings agencies highlight the growing risk associated with these bonds. Israel's escalating budget deficit, driven by military operations in Gaza, has severely strained its economy and currency. Investing in a currency in a world in conflict is inherently risky, and economic indicators make it clear that Israel bonds are a poor investment choice. Furthermore, Israel has been accused of committing genocide against Palestinians. Crazy how this isn't enough of a reason to not even be having this conversation, but here we are. The ICJ has cited Israeli Finance Minister for Genocidal Statements, adding to the risk associated with these bonds. The growing list of countries and organizations boycotting Israel over its violations of international law complicates its ability to meet debt obligations. Additional ICJ rulings could lead to the, sorry, additional ICJ rulings could lead to the seizure of Israeli government assets, further jeopardizing the bond's security. There are significant legal ramifications for Hillsborough County if it invests in Israel, especially after the ICJ's rulings. Morally, it is wrong to invest in a country committing genocide. Morally, it is wrong to invest in a country committing genocide. Such an investment would indirectly support these actions, making our county complicit in war crimes. Recently, American Jewish organizations have protested against purchasing Israel bonds for this very reason. Our focus should be on policies and investments that benefit Hillsborough County. Our job is to make financially sound decisions that create jobs and support growth within our community, not to engage in political stunts or ideologically motivated investments. You were elected to represent the residents of Hillsborough County, not the interests of another country.
Thank you.
Asif Kunwar, followed by Danaya Terabisky, Terabishi.
Hi, I am, all right.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, uh, thank you very much, commissioners. Uh, my name is Asif Kunwar, and I am a, I am a Tampa-Carris resident, and my profession, I am a computer scientist, a teacher for computer science, and a university lecturer for computer science. I am asking you to deny D2's change in investment policy, and I would like to present an alternative plan for county commissioners for local investments of $25 million. I'm asking, I'm proposing a strategic investment of $25 million to create local businesses focused on computer science and artificial intelligence, and it has a potential of exponential return. I would like you to consider this for a local investment. That's number one. Secondly, I like to present an opposing argument for the proposed ordinance modification. I would like to bring your focus and attention for this modification where they have asked to update the Maryland 123-year statutory notes index to the ICC B of A 123-year statutory index. My concerns are this new index may not perform as reliably as the current index. Secondly, there may be a transition cost those are involved in changing index.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, Danaya Terabishi, followed by David Solomon. Danaya here? David, are you here?
Hello.
Oh, virtual, okay, yes, go ahead.
Can you hear?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Assalamualaikum, meaning peace be upon you all. My name's Danaya Terabishi, and I'm a current high school senior and resident in Hillsborough County for the past 10 years. In order to understand the county's consideration of investing in Israeli bonds, we must consider both the historical and current context of the situation. Today marks the 76th year since the Nakba were the forced displacement of over 700,000 Palestinians from their ancestral homeland. The direct translation of the term Nakba literally means catastrophe, and over the past several months, we have witnessed none other than a catastrophe on multiple fronts. Since October, over 6,000 people have been killed, 14,500 of which are children. We have seen children's body parts thrown unceremoniously across walls, humanitarian aid workers deliberately being targeted, and the absolute decimation of all of the infrastructure in Gaza. We meet today to discuss the revisions to Hillsborough County investment policy to invest in Israeli bonds, and we implore the commissioners of Hillsborough County to vote against the motion, a motion that I cannot help but think is deeply rooted in the political climate of the present. Beyond humanitarian concerns, investments should be based on financial soundness rather than politics. In the past few months, financial rating industries have downgraded Israeli bonds significantly, and it is ill-advised to invest in a country in which boycotts and sanctions against it grow daily, making it difficult for Israel to pay off its debt. Furthermore, as protests across Hillsborough and the country, along with the large number of emails from Hillsborough County taxpayers, demonstrate the overwhelming rise in condemnations of Israel's breaking of international law, using tax dollars of such quantities neither represents the best interest of them nor poses any benefit to Hillsborough County, and rather presents potential legal ramifications since the International Court of Law has ruled Israel as guilty of plausible genocide. The Hillsborough County Commissioners should look to invest in entities that pose economic benefits and serve the concerns of their residents, such as affordable housing and education, rather than make politically charge investment decisions that go against the economic, legal, and moral interests of the county. Because of this, the Hillsborough County Commissioners do not amend the current investment policy.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We've got two more virtual, David Solomon and Amtul Afifa. David, are you on?
I am.
Go ahead.
Ready? My name is David Solomon. I'm a 30-year veteran. I'm an investment banker and a leader within the Jewish Voices for Peace. Speaking strictly from an economic perspective, an investment in Israel should be based on four basic guidelines. The current financial fundamental status of the investment, or of the place where we're investing, and the future outlook and benefits of the investment that's being made. Number two, the ability to have a positive investment return as opposed to a negative loss. Investment safety levels so the investment can be paid back, and finally, but very importantly, the strategic and legal ramifications of the standing of the investment that's being made. Fundamentally speaking, the Israeli government's ratings has been negatively rated by multiple financial ratings, and I'm upset about that. The investments that are being, and that is due to investments that are being pulled out by global technology leaders, and that is for the lack of certain stability of the future of the Israeli economy. Two, there has been a weakened Israeli labor market due to hundreds of thousands of reservists being drafted into the army, committing genocidal acts that have traumatized those soldiers themselves, and have haunted them, and have had many committing suicides already in the hundreds, and many more they are unable to go back to normal life. Therefore, that is going to affect them in the future. The permanent reverse migration of more than 1 million Israeli duos deus of the world, and this is of the elite workers in Israel, again, therefore diminishing the future. Unlike the past, Israel has been very strong economically, but going forward in the future, after all of this effect, Israel is not going to be the same. The two hours of retaliatory Iranian attack has cost Israel more than $1.5 billion. Imagine five to six years of ongoing war that is going to be happening. Lastly, the legal ramifications. If we invest, we may be liable, and therefore we may be subject to penalties and fines, and therefore this could cause us a negative financial impact. Thank you for considering what would be a reasonable investment to be made.
Is Amtul Afifa on? Amtul Afifa, are you on?
I guess.
Go ahead.
Yes, I am. Thank you. My name is Amtul Afifa, I'm an early childhood educator, and I strongly disagreed from the agenda item D2, which proposed amending Hillsborough County investment policy to invest surplus funds in bonds backed by the government of Israel. The proposal is deeply flawed on several reasons, for several reasons. It's wantonly to gamble taxpayer money with pressing local funding needs, and local investment should be the priority, to enhance public services and infrastructure, direct impact on improving schools, parks, and transportation, building a resilient local economy. We are in dire need of fast effective housing for our residents in our communities. There'll be a lot of people in our county are facing homelessness. Local investments allow greater transparency and oversight, foreign investment can obscure spending and reduce accountability. And on ethical level, we can see that International Court of Justice warns of possible acts of genocide by Israelis, we are not supposed to be financing genocidal projects. Continence is a Palestinian conflict. In conclusion, the proposed amendment is financially, economically, and morally sound, but potential risks far outweigh by benefit. Surplus funds should address urgent local needs, not risky foreign investments. I urge you to reject agenda item D2 and maintain the current investment policy. Let us focus on being responsible towards our public funds and state in our community. Thank you for that consideration.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Sabrina Atik, who is virtual, followed by Brian Taub, who's in person. Sabrina, are you on?
Commissioner, Sabrina is not on the line. Sabrina is not on the line.
Okay, thank you very much. Brian, are you here? Yes, ma'am. Oh, you're here in person, come on forward, go ahead. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Atik. I'm also here to urge you to vote against the D2 resolution. Ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Investment decisions must be based on financial prudence rather than political or ideological considerations. The primary responsibility of the Commission is to ensure the financial stability and growth of our county, not to engage in international political matters. Israel bonds prevent several significant, present several significant financial risks, geopolitical risks, economic instability. Financial ratings agencies have downgraded Israel bonds multiple times in recent months. This is a clear indicator of the increased financial risk. Israel's economy is under tremendous pressure under, due to its extensive military operations in Gaza, leading to skyrocketing budget deficit. This deficit is putting a strain on Israel's currency and overall economic stability. Investing in bonds from a country in such a precarious financial situation is not a sound decision for our county, and there are also some legal and ethical concerns, the potential legal ramifications for Israel Hillsborough County are significant. The International Court of Justice, ICJ, has already ruled on the possibility of a genocide charges against Israel. This could lead to legal challenges against our county if we invest in these bonds, as we would indirectly be supporting a nation accused of serious human rights violations. Moreover, American Jewish organizations and various advocacy groups have recently protested against the purchase of Israel bonds, highlighting the ethical dilemma. Investing in these bonds means indirectly supporting actions that many view as war crimes. As stewards of public funds, we must ensure that our investments do not compromise our moral and ethical standards. Our primary focus should be on investments that benefit Hillsborough County. Your role is to create jobs and support economic growth within our community and the broader U.S. Investing in foreign bonds, especially those fraught with such significant risks, diverts resources away from local development. By prioritizing investments in our local economy, we can foster growth, create employment opportunities, and improve infrastructure rights right here in Hillsborough County.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Brian Taub, followed by Jerry Font, who's virtual, Brian Taub in person, are you here? Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Good morning, members of the, I think it's still morning, members of the Commission, and thank you for hearing me speak. My name is Brian Taub, I am a 33-year resident of Hillsborough County. I am on the National Leadership Council of Israel Bonds and on the Government Finance and Industry Leadership Council for Israel Bonds as well. Since the meeting this morning is to vote on the legislation to consider adopting, the legislation to consider purchasing Israel bonds for your investment portfolio, I'm here to speak to you about two relevant issues. One is Israel bonds, and the other is Israel's economy. Israel bonds has been around for 73 years. Israel's never defaulted or been late on a payment. Many may ask, this may not be a good time because Israel's in war. Unfortunately, Israel's been under war for most of its existence, and has been under attack most of its existence. However, because of that, and because of the belief in Israel, $2.7 billion have been invested since October 7th, and Israel is stronger than ever. There are 11 states that invest in Israel bonds. Florida is one of them, as you heard, $250 million is being invested in Israel bonds. Three counties in Florida and 15 counties in Ohio invest in Israel bonds. As you heard, $700 million have been invested by Palm Beach County, all coming after October 7th. Israel's economy is the fourth-best performing economy among the OECD countries. Israel's posted the highest GDP growth rate of any country post-COVID. Israel leads all countries in labor productivity. Israel is known as a nation of innovation. Israel has 300 multinational corporations with their R&amp;D facilities in Israel. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Next is Lauren Prager. Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry Font is virtual, Jerry Font. Jerry, you on?
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, go ahead.
All right, perfect. My name is Jerry Font. Okay, cool. My name is Jerry Font, I've grown up in Hillsborough County, I currently live at 33605, and I am very involved in local matters, and I'm a Jew who is proud of his heritage. I'm here today to stand against the county allowing the assessment of Israel bonds, which we know will lead to actual investment. It's not a good investment, there's no guarantee of return, and it further alienates a major portion of the local community here in Hillsborough County. This is not a decision that came up in the Board of County Commissioners prior to October. It is clearly a response to the current Israeli aggression towards Palestine. Let me be clear, Israeli aggression towards Palestine predates October 7th. On October 6th, a Palestinian civilian was killed in the West Bank. Last February in 2023, I was a vigil, honoring, among others, Palestinian civilians killed in Jenin in the West Bank by Israeli forces the month prior. There were others killed in between those dates and before them. I bring this up to express what is not an opinion but a fact. Israel has been killing Palestinian civilians as a matter of policy for 76 years as of today. The government of Israel is recklessly spending money right now with only one purpose, the ethnic cleansing of Gaza. This is, again, not my opinion, but a promise made by Israeli leadership in multiple public statements over the last several months, referring to Palestinians as human animals that must be destroyed. Some speakers have alluded to antisemitism in those speaking against this ordinance. I and other Jews who have actually engaged with those at protests supporting Palestinian rights and life have been treated with respect, community, and appreciation. To suggest anything else is patently untrue. Further, it's wrong to say political action against a nation is antisemitic, and the claim that it would be is deeply offensive to this Jew. I'll be clear that my Judaism is not defined by a government, and certainly not defined by the decisions of politicians. Benjamin Netanyahu is a far-right ideologue who lacks the support of his own citizens, who is using this assault as a last-ditch effort to maintain control. This was true before October 2023, and it is true now. Residents here deserve better. We should invest our funds locally, not in nations and industries that are tied to war, but instead in those that are rooted in life, that can offer a reliable turn-on investment without antagonizing and alienating mass.
Thank you for your comments.
I stand right here on the right.
Lauren Parker, who's in person, followed by Daniel Berkowitz. Lauren, are you here? Nope.
Good afternoon. My name is Sultan Chodri, I was born and raised in Plain City, Florida. I want to say that on the record, I don't want to be here, as my father just had a stroke. I'm coming straight from the hospital. However, I have to speak for justice no matter what, standing for justice even if it means sacrificing my life for it. Regardless of what side you personally support, it's not okay to support a foreign war with our money, so let's not even risk having any blood on our hands. Let's invest in a future we can all be proud of, and vote no for D2, thank you.
Gary Klein, who's in person.
I'm not going to speak.
Okay.
I've already spoken in favor.
Very good, thank you, yeah, you'd have to come forward on the microphone to speak, sir.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak, however, I'm not going to speak. Those who have already spoken in favor of the proposal have said what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Keenan Osmond. Keenan, are you here? Okay.
Hello, I am Philip Frond, and I am here to speak against D2. The city of Tampa has one of the biggest Arab communities in the state of Florida, so why are we using money to invest towards Israeli bonds when there are plenty of Arab people in Tampa whose families are being killed in Palestine right now? And what Israel is doing is a genocide, and they are settling Palestinian homes. And I am from Poland, and my family had their land stolen and attempted to be settled by the Nazi occupation, and I think it's a shame that we are trying to invest in a government that is trying to do the same to the Palestinians in the West Bank. We've seen, we've seen countries like Colombia cut ties with Israel, Brazil cancel $100 million weapons sending to Israel. So why are we still supporting this country in the midst of a genocide when it's just morally wrong? It is just completely unsafe for finances, and it does not benefit the people who live in America while they're struggling each and every day. Thank you.
That's the final public comment, and I want to thank everyone who came down and those who participated virtually. Now going to board discussion, Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and yep, it's no mistake that I'm the one who brought this item, I'm proud that I brought it, I still stand behind it. A lot of misinformation, I think, out there that first just want to try to clear up. Ms. Wise, as far as, if we approve this today, it does not mean we're necessarily purchasing Israeli bonds, it means that we will have the option or the opportunity to invest, correct?
Correct, it gives that option.
And we are going to, as far as safeguards set up, we're going to have an investment committee, we have a consultant as well, my understanding that will be involved, could you allude to that for briefly?
So we have a very large investment portfolio, which is currently reviewed by an investment committee comprised of folks from the county attorney, sorry, county administration side, as well as the clerk side, as well as an independent consultant who reviews the portfolio quarterly.
Right, so, you know, clearly we have sufficient parameters with a qualified team to determine if, when, and how to invest, and I think that's very, very critical and very, very important. You know, and I've listened to a lot of the speakers speak today, and, you know, I'll never understand the antisemitism that comes out of the community statewide or nationally, I won't, I won't ever get it, and I will look everybody in the face and let you, let everyone --
Folks, let's keep it down.
-- and let you know that I stand by this, and for those reasons, I move proudly for the approval of D2. Thank you.
We've got a motion approved by Commissioner Owen, and Commissioner Winstall, Commissioner Winstall, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I took the time to go through what we actually currently invest in. 81% to United States Treasury, this motion would cap any investments at 2%. We currently invest in Apple. I mean, I'm offended that the county even uses Apple phones, just because fundamentally, I believe that the CEO of Apple has committed crimes against humanity with the Foxconn Tower in Taiwan, and I don't believe in providing any more investment or revenue to somebody that participates in that type of behavior, but the investment team doesn't take those types of points into consideration when they make investments, they just make sound financial investments when they do commit. I know that I've met, that two of the, of all of my time in the military and in government, two of the smartest people I've ever met in government are on our investment committee by happenstance. I'm not super pro-government, big government as everyone knows, but we just happen to be fortunate enough to have two of the most intelligent people that I have ever met in government on our investment committee, and so I'll leave those decisions to them. As for the money being, going towards teachers and schools and bad school districts, Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners, the school board is the one and only budget that I've found that is entirely separated out of our oversight. That goes from the State's Department of Education directly to the school board, the school board meets down the street, so if you have funding issues of how they've been taking care of the schools, I encourage you to go down there and address their board accordingly. This has nothing to do, and no one here has pretended, and at any point throughout this, I've sat through every single one of these meetings, and I've said very little, I've heard members of the community consistently from one side come and bash another side of the community, no one is pretending to understand the thousands of years of political dissidence and disagreements and violence that has occurred in a nation that, you're right, most people in America have not even left, I think, I think like 75 to 80% of Americans have not even left 100-mile radius of where they've grown up, and that's not what we're doing here today. If that was the reasons, I heard a lot of rhetoric that was spewed, I think that it was convenient that none of the rhetoric addressed that this could go back to January of 2006, when the people of Palestine voluntarily voted in to office Hamas, a terrorist organization that had a founding charter to destroy its neighbors. So at what point did they think that that would produce positive outcomes for peace in the region? I would argue that there is none, and none of that was mentioned today.
Deputy, please escort those out that are being a disturbance, thank you.
This is simply about, I've, we listened for hours, and not just on this meeting, we've had people screaming at us, one alluding to threats today, which I found interesting. We have people issuing demands and emails. This is simply an investment policy to improve potentially our portfolio. I'll rest and yield, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. On October 7th, 2023, Hamas kidnapped and slaughtered innocent men, women, and children in Israel, the greatest loss of Jewish life in one day since the Holocaust. In response to these shocking acts of murder and terror, I voted with the board to raise the flag of Israel in front of this building. The flag was displayed in October 2023 for three days. This flag raising honored and remembered the victims of Hamas, and called for us all to stand with Israel in the wake of the horrific attack on its nation and its people, to remember its victims, and to pray for the safe return of those taken. I signed this board's proclamation declaring November 15th, 2023, to be State of Israel Day in Hillsborough County. The proclamation condemned Hamas's violence and slaughter of innocent people and demanded the return of the hostages. The proclamation affirmed Israel's sovereignty as an independent nation, Israel's right to exist, and Israel's right to defend itself. This item today is different. This is an amendment to Hillsborough County ordinances about the county's financial investments, specifically bonds. Our current rules don't allow for investments in the bonds of foreign sovereign nations. Many residents have come to meetings, sent hundreds of emails to all of our offices, and are here today expressing strong opposition to this change to our and are here today expressing strong opposition to this change to our county fiscal policy. I want to be very clear about one thing. I have the highest confidence in the county administrator and our staff. I do believe that they put forward a reasonable approach to this in light of the board's direction. However, I'm concerned that this board has created a controversy about county bonds and finances where we shouldn't have. I really do hope that this doesn't start a trend.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Owen, second by Commissioner Winstall. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
All right, thank you. Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. The next item is Item B1.
Deputy, please escort these gentlemen out. Thank you. Have a nice day. Thanks for coming down. Okay, Bonnie.
The next item is to accept the water meter reading billing process audit performed by the county attorneys and internal auditor's office. Melinda Genzarli is here to present this item.
Good afternoon.
Sure. Oh, all right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Melinda Genzarli, acting county internal auditor for the county internal auditor's office, and I'm here today to request the board to accept the Water Meter Reading to Billing Process Audit Report 2024-04. The audit's objective was to determine the maturity of the Water Meter Reading to Billing Process management activities and was performed in conformance with the international standards for the professional practice of internal auditing. Prior to today, I briefed the commissioners on the audit report's contents. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have before requesting the board to accept the audit report.
All right, thank you. No questions or comments. Can we have a motion to accept the report?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Myers, second by Commissioner Cullen, to accept the report for B1. Please record your vote. Screens aren't coming up.
Motion carried seven to zero.
B2.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item is Item B2. This is to adopt a resolution in the various bond documents relating to the county's commercial paper capital improvement program, not to exceed $300 million. Kevin Bricky is here to present the item, but we have a number of professional staff in the audience, as well as our bond counsel and financial advisor as well.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Management and Budget. Item B2 asks for approval of a resolution that would designate JP Morgan Chase as the new credit facility provider for the county's commercial paper program, and to approve a related budget amendment and to authorize the clerk to pay related transaction costs up to $500,000. These costs would include bond counsel fees, disclosure counsel fees, financial advisor fees, and other related fees. This action will replace the current credit facility with Wells Fargo, which expires on June 17th. The new facility is for a principal amount not to exceed $300 billion. This is same as the current facility. This annual, the new annual facility or liquidity fee is 0.33%. The term is five years. The CP facility is used to finance all or a portion of capital project costs, which could include transportation projects, public safety projects, parks, water, wastewater projects. For example, in 2021, CP was used in advance of the transportation bond, and that facilitated some early pre-construction costs like design and engineering, and allowed us to have a more strategic way of issuing the bonds later. The budget amendment will facilitate the payment of transaction costs and the rollover of the outstanding CP of $11.52 million. As Ms. Wise said, we have representatives of our financial advisors, our bond counsel, and others here if you have questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Winstall.
Could you just, well, first, I got to about page 57 of 282 when I realized that there was a very concise four-page memo executive summary at the very end, so if we could put that at the beginning going forward, that would be wonderful. Could you just elaborate on the point, the 33 base points, and what that translates to in terms of us paying out towards, it looks like only $11.5 million? And we did confirm that it is only $11.5 million total. Okay, so could you just elaborate on that 33?
The 33 basis points is the fee to have the facility available for the county's use. It's up to $300 million, and that annual facility fee is incurred annually. So that would be approximately $990,000 on the $300 million to have the facility available.
So we pay the $990, no matter what. They hold open that money if it's available on credit for us? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think one thing great with the commercial, this program, is we can award the contract and pay for things preliminary before issuing that big debt. And to me, that's something that I think is really critical about this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, you know, I don't know if anyone's moved for approval, but I'll move for approval on this.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Owen and second Commissioner Winstall. No other comments. Please record your vote on B2.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. The next item is, Mr. Chair, your item F1 regarding the Wade Boggs Athletic Achievement Award selection.
Yeah, if we could just have a motion approving the selection recommendations. Motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item.
And finally, the next item is a staff report. This is Item G1. This is to receive a report that was requested from Code Enforcement and Development Services regarding large-scale events, and Cameron Clark from the county attorney's office is here to present this item, and we have other staff available as well.
Good afternoon, Kevin.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, board members. Cameron Clark, Assistant County Attorney. This item is a staff report that regards large-scale events that have been held in agricultural zoning districts near residential areas. It is a joint staff report between our office, Development Services, Code Enforcement, and Fire Rescue. We also work closely with the Sheriff's Office on this issue. Just to want to clarify, the motion is to receive the report, and from a comment that was made earlier, there's actually no regulatory changes to the land development code or any ordinance that are proposed in this staff's report. It's merely just a summary of the current regulations and how they affect this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And yeah, one, someone came earlier and spoke to this item, and it couldn't have been more wrong. Failed to do, I think, any research on this, and I assure you, no one's been more boots on the ground on this particular issue than me. We are reacting to what people in the rural community are complaining about. I'm a huge fan of agritourism. I represent most, if not all, the agriculture in our, in my district, but it doesn't give you a right to set up Woodstock and big concerts. And so many folks are not agriculture people. They're purchasing property for the purpose of agriculture. I will say this, our code enforcement in our county with what we have in place has been doing their job. It's working. So I'm not going to take any action on this. I really appreciate staff. I appreciate legal for working with me so long, and Mr. Gormley and all those folks for rolling up their sleeves with me. But at this point, looking and reacting to the actions that we've taken against some bad actors, I don't see any action that is necessary to take. So I'll move to accept the report, and that's it. Thanks.
All right, we've got a motion to accept by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers. I just want to thank Commissioner Owen for his work on this, and no comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one. I'm sorry, six to zero.
Bonnie.
And finally, future discussion items.
Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two. One, I would like to, and I believe before any ordinances, if it is a new ordinance, there's a policy that requires us to actually vote before you write it. Okay. So I will direct the county attorney's office to review the eligibility to amend Ordinance Number 13-17 to determine an expansion of Chapter 2, Article 8, to mirror the state of Florida's constitution restricting a public officer from lobbying Hillsborough County for a period of six years after vacation of a public office. And my second one, Mr. Chair, is to direct the county attorney's office to review the eligibility of restricting awards of Hillsborough County government funds to organizations owned or operated by public officers presiding over any office in Hillsborough County and individuals of an arms-linked relationship to said presiding public officers. This should include any applicable federal and state laws prohibitions that may or may not exist.
Bonnie, you get all that? Okay. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And mine is more to agenda something for the next board meeting. I was under the understanding that we were going to be limited to three proclamations per year. I'm not a bah humbug person. I think proclamations are great. I do a ton of them. I just do most of them outside of this meeting room. So I'd like to bring an agenda item at the next board meeting to limit in-meeting proclamations to three per year beginning in 2025. That's it.
Okay. Be good. All right, nothing further. We're adjourned.